All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Monday, November 24th, 2025 special council meeting. We're here tonight to go over the 2026 budget, and if there is time, we will be touching some more on the governance manual. So we're going to start off with the invocation given by Mayor Pro Tim Cargill, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
Our Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to come together as a community tonight. We ask for your blessing on this meeting in this week of Thanksgiving, that you will be with us as we make the decisions that are important to the future of our city. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bring the meeting to order. I'm sorry, Evan and Shane, I'm not online yet. I'm still booting up here. I apologize. We'll go ahead with roll call. Councilmember Kurtz, Councilmember Ball, here, Mayor Pro Tim Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
All right, all present accounted for. Are there any requests for amendments to the agenda? Right, not hearing any?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Second. Any meaning, my mo- Council, second by Councilmember Ball. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Citizen comments flowing right through this at 6:01. So if there's anybody here in council chambers who'd like to make a citizen comment, we have our white half sheets on the table over by the door. If you could fill that out and get it to Kyle, almost said Rochelle, I didn't look over there, to Kyle at the end of the table, he'll get that to me. If there's somebody online who'd like to make a comment, please shoot a note to our meeting host in the chat feature and we'll call on you. But if we don't have anyone, I will refrain from going through the rest of the rules. For now, anybody? Nope. Kyle, were there any written comments? That you know, nothing to report? Okay. We have no announcements, proclamations, or special presentations. We will go to reports and inquiries, starting with City Council. Are there any reports or inquiries from the council? Not hearing any. I really don't have anything from Mayor's report since last meeting. That brings us to the City Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is going to be really quick. It's just a, since we're together, an opportunity to remind everyone of some things happening over the next week with the Home for the Holidays celebration. So Saturday, November 29th, most of the festivities and activities start. So that's going to begin with Light Up Liberty Lake over at the Trailhead Golf Course at 5:00 PM. There's going to be a tree lighting ceremony and some other things happening over there from 5:00 to 7:00. So if you're in the mood for that kind of thing, check that out. It's also the start of some of these other events within Home for the Holidays, including Winter Wonderland out at Orchard Park. That is from 5:00 to 10:00 between November 29th and January 4th. Battle of the Branches, which did require registration. Registration is closed. That also starts on November the 29th, also at Orchard Park. And then finally, Santa's Mailbox starts on December the 1st, which is Monday, and that is at the Liberty Lake Library and happens within library hours between December the 1st and December the 12th. And so if there are any questions on those events, I'd be happy to answer. But if not, Mayor, that's all I have for my report.
Okay. Any questions for Mark? All right. That brings us to our workshop. First workshop is the 2026 budget. We will open it up for discussion. So don't all jump at once. Mayor Pro Tim.
Can, Mark, can you walk us through these papers that we have on our, or Kyle, or whoever?
Yeah, certainly. So while Evan pulls that up, so the first of the two visuals that you have in front of you, Council, tonight, we're bringing back some of the data regarding the discussion on the 3% adjustment that was provided for in the preliminary budget and what impact that has. And so as you guys will review that, that far right-hand column there, that's highlighted in yellow signifies that impact per 1%.
Slide for the audience. Sorry, Kyle.
Yeah.
Let's wait for that to come up. Thank you. There we go.
Excellent. Okay. And so the discussion was, okay, so we have a, we have a 3% adjustment. So we have include, in addition to that, there's our step adjustments. So our steps are 2%. And so those are upon a satisfactory performance review. You're moving through those steps and each, each employee obviously has their own individual step. Cost of living adjustment per the CPI data that we had was 2.7%. And then this is an acknowledgement that we're, we're trying to catch up to some of our peers. And on the next slide, we'll, we'll get into what that visual looks like. But for the purposes of the impact per 1% increase, and Council, feel free to discuss however you'd like, that impact is $61,000. And so you can infer there on the bottom right that the 3% adjustment has a cumulative 2026 impact of $183,000. So that was kind of the discussion revolving around salaries that we kind of ended with at the last meeting. And if we go to the next slide real quick, we do not intend to get into each one of these individually. This is merely just a visual of the data that was polled, that, so the entities that were polled and where each individual classification falls within its peers. And so for purposes of, of discussion, we, we can discuss it if you'd like, but this is intended to just be visual only.
Okay. All right, Mayor Pro Tim.
Kyle, clarification on this slide. The only two cities there that are similar to our size are Airway Heights and Cheney. I think the rest of them, obviously Spokane Valley is, is much larger, but if I'm not mistaken, Walla Walla, West Richland, Moses Lake all have at least 50,000 people and Pullman, I think, has like 25 or 20. So are there other cities of our size that they also surveyed that should be on here?
So Mark, can you dive into the, so I, and I can pull up those populations. I want to say Moses Lake is about 35,000. Pullman, I think, is about 30,000. Spokane Valley is over 100,000. I think it's like 110, something to that effect. And I think West Richland is about 15,000.
Can you say that again?
10,000.
So I will verify that information, but I believe West Richland.
We've got some.
Yeah, you're fine.
Echo, let's get this resolved. We good? Okay.
So Walla Walla, I believe, was in the 30,000 range, and I'll verify all of this. And then West Richland, I think, was right around 20, maybe a little bit less.
But there are no other cities that they pulled that are more in the 10 to 15 range other than us and Airway Heights and Cheney?
On this side of the.
Yeah. The, the AWC salary survey makes the survey available to every city in Washington, all 281 of them. Not everyone responds to the survey. There are other comparably sized cities in the survey. We chose not to include them in this analysis, primarily because they're on the west side. And so there are very few comparables on the east side of the mountains. And we felt that this was a good sampling to, to show some of our potential competitors.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kurtz.
And I just want to make sure that I'm reading this right. So we've got the Liberty Lake minimum and maximum in the first two columns. And then for the next two columns, minimum and maximum. But if they're in the green, that means we pay more. And if they're in a red, then we pay less.
Correct.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Mark, I, I assume that you guys came back with this because of comments that were made in our last meeting. Look at the possibility where we could cut?
Well, we, we certainly wanted to have a conversation based on the request to come back with some information, more information about the market, the, the recommended market adjustment. This analysis was done well before we made the recommendation for the market adjustment to understand if, if we needed to consider that or not. And as you can see by some of this data, in some cases, like I mentioned before, we, we have some significant deficiencies. And so based, based on the analysis, we felt confident that moving forward with a proposed market adjustment was the right thing to do.
Yeah, the, the request at the last meeting from Council, which I believe was, was, I can't remember if it was unanimous or not, but it was majority in favor of bringing back the additional information.
I'll follow up on that. I, I really appreciate you guys coming with this, but for me personally, I would rather see if we're going to look at doing any cuts as cutting elsewhere in the budget, not in salary. You know, if, I don't want to be ahead of everybody else, but I don't want to be far behind everybody else. I want to be in what's fair and equitable. And what's fair and equitable is that for everybody who works to do the best they can for the city, and I think all of our employees fall in that category. I think this is admirable, but me personally, I don't think this is necessary.
Well.
I would rather see, I would rather see cuts elsewhere, which I think we can easily get into, a large, huge amounts of money.
And you know, that wasn't the request. The request was for the additional information. It was started by Councilmember Spencer and actually asked what it looked like at 2% and 1.5%. And it's, the math's easier for everybody to do the 1% increments. So it wasn't a request to cut these. It was just the request for information that came from the Council at the last meeting.
I do understand that.
Councilmember Ball.
So, okay, for example, city treasurer, it's green all the way across. So that means we're even with these other cities?
So in, in translating what you're seeing in front of you, that is correct. Although I will point out, on this particular position, the only other city in that group of cities that you see listed under polled entities that has a city treasurer is Cheney.
Okay. And then on building official, okay, so you said the red, what's, you've got pink, the lighter pink and then bright red. So what am I, what are we looking at here?
The number is the most important thing. The, the color just kind of gives you an indication of how far under or over zero we are. So darker the red, the farther away from zero we are in the negative, the darker the green, the farther away we are from zero to the positive.
And it's important to understand that we, we are, we are comparing like for like. And so where you see city treasurer, a lot of cities would have an accountant on staff, or they would be titled something else. And it, we don't want to be too presumptuous with comparing those benchmark positions that don't exactly mirror that and assuming that they do essentially the same job function.
Quick, before we go back around, Councilmember Dunn, anything, or Councilmember Spencer?
I would just offer the, the analysis is in context and scope. The identified comparables to me are fit. I appreciate the distinction of eastern versus western Washington. That's going to be an important, an important one. And it testifies well to the, the proposed budget includes a reasonable amount for increases in staff salaries.
Thank you. Councilmember Spencer, before we go back around.
Sure. I, I appreciate you guys bringing back this information. I think at the end of the day, my, my question is, because all these numbers can be useful, but what, what is our problem with attrition overall as a city? We, we've heard a little bit from, from Ben's department. Are, are we having a bunch of people leaving to go to Airway Heights or Cheney or some other place in the state to work in this, in a, in a like position type of thing?
So again, you heard the feedback from Public Works that has been our, our department with the highest number of turnover in a specific job family. We, we're blessed to have relatively low turnover. My concern is if we keep getting, if, if those pinks become deep reds over time, that may change. That, that's the concern.
We haven't been keeping up. All right, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, you're next.
Mark, Mark and Kyle, two questions as follow-up questions. One, this is salary. Do we offer anything in additional benefits as well compared to the other cities? And then my second question is, have you guys looked at Post Falls or Coeur d'Alene as well?
So the, the answer to the first question is, I'm, I'm sure that if you went through all of these cities, there would be different aspects of benefits that are similar and different. We did not do a deep dive into ancillary benefits other than what was provided by AWC. We, we have done spot comparisons, particularly in the police department with Post Falls and Coeur d'Alene and some other nearby Idaho cities. For this analysis, we don't have access to a database of comparables. We, we could do, I think, a question in a previous meeting was, you know, could we do a specific targeted market analysis? And so in order, if, if we did something like that, yes, we could do a across-the-board comparison, but at this time, we don't have access to that data.
And just a note, I know what you mean by benefits, but just a note to remind everybody, so the information on the first page was fully loaded, taking into consideration insurance costs and social taxes.
Taxes.
Thank you. Yeah. All the taxes and matching and all that stuff. What, so it's not just straight salaries. Okay. Any other questions on these two sheets from Kyle? Right, hearing none. We'll go on to next.
And so the next, the next one is just, again, kind of tailing a discussion that we had last week, the consideration of, of the, kind of the monetary impact of our different softwares that we have. And so as Evan's pulling that up, we broke that down first and foremost by proposed softwares. And then just a rundown of the major softwares from each department. And so apologies if, if this is a little small, I'll, I'll read off. So we've talked about the, the proposed accounting and timekeeping software. And so that, that kind of touches all of the departments and a wide swath of the programs that we offer. See Click Fix is new-ish. It was just implemented, but I think for the purposes of the, of the budget, we're, we're including this for the first time in 2026. And so this was the replacement to TextMyGov. And you'll see those two have corresponding reductions in existing software. And so it's not, it's not going to necessarily be a one-for-one on the accounting and timekeeping because we are looking for additional services and additional reporting and and, and uses within that accounting and timekeeping software. And then the last one you saw was a presentation from the PD regarding the digital forensics request with the opioid abatement funds. And so that cost here represents that software cost. There will be additional hardware. But for the purposes of our discussion, we would generally anticipate about $23,000 going forward in software costs. And so I, I don't know that we need to, unless, unless there are specific questions on the existing software, we're certainly happy to answer those. But these, these are the new ones that, that are proposed for, for 2026.
Councilmember Ball.
Okay, so just to be clear, just the front page is the new, but Placer's new-ish, right? And Zen City, isn't that new-ish? I mean, aren't these kind of?
Not for 2026.
Okay.
So the, to distinguish between what we're considering new for 2026 and everything else is whether it was approved in, in a previous year, even if it was only one year or multiple years. So everything that you see on that first slide is being proposed for the first time in 2026.
And then there on the second page, Linda, you'll see Placer and Zen City listed.
So, yeah, I was looking at this, this afternoon and I, I, I think you know that some of these software prices, I don't, don't make me very happy. I mean, Zen City, I, I just, I added a bunch of them up and it was $178,000 and 50, basically $178,000. You know, like this timekeeping software, that's new, right?
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, that's $50,000. I mean, that in itself could help us move toward getting an economic development person, even part-time, you know, and I, I, I know we talked about this, but timekeeping, it, it, it can't be that complicated. There's a lot of, like, doesn't ADP just have like a, an app that you can use on your phone to clock in and out? That would be a lot cheaper? Or what are some of the other ones?
We looked at ADP and Paychex and they were out of our price range.
Okay, well, there's a bunch of them.
Yeah.
You know, but and, you know, whatever happened, and if you're on salary, it doesn't matter. But, you know, what is it?
It, it does, it does matter if you're on salary because there are time off. There, there, everything that you would put into a time and attendance system for an hourly person would be put in for a salaried person.
Okay, well, whatever happened to the good old fashioned time clock, you know? I mean, I, I don't know, I just.
Because this, the, the progress in timekeeping and accounting software has replaced that because it's more efficient and it's more accurate. It's less, less chance for error. It's less costly labor-wise to do it. That's why we're going to software and better software for these things.
And Kyle may want to address this in more detail, but particularly for things like accounting and timekeeping, there's a compliance piece that we, we don't want to get into a position of being non-compliant. And if you want to address that in any other way, feel free.
Yeah. And so there's been, there's obviously been increases in productivity and capability for these softwares that eliminate a lot of that human error that saves untold amount of hours unpacking because, you know, going back to, let's call it the 50s, you, everything was written on a general ledger and then you did punch in. And, and that human interaction causes errors. And so the increases in the capabilities of software eliminates that error, eliminates that human element, eliminates that time that is required for, for staff to, to cross, to verify that the, the accuracy of those things and to carry out that service that a software just does automatically.
Plus the reporting. That's one, I know that's one of the things you're high on, on this one, is the reporting aspect. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
Guys, if I, if I said, pick one of the new ones, which one would you say is most important to the, to your ability to run the city in the next year?
So I, I would answer that by saying that the digital forensics, I think, has a dedicated revenue source. And so I, I don't know that we would say that, no, let's not use that one because I, I, they have presented a circumstance that that pays for itself in the first, call it, three or four years. And then we can have additional discussions as that's rolled into out years, how we're going to, how we're going to account for that. The, the accounting and timekeeping, it says $50,000. There's an offset to that because we would no longer be using Springbrook. And you see that on the second page there. So you have a offsetting reduction of $23,000. And you have an additional offsetting reduction of 4, 4,800 for that attendance on demand. So we're, we're adding likely one software and we're eliminating two. The net cost is, is still around just north of $20,000. The return that we're getting for that is better communication with council, better communication with our residents on, obviously, the, the state of the city's finances. It, I, I am hopeful that, that we can kind of enter kind of a, a new age of being able to report in a much more reader-friendly format, kind of our, our monthly updates and our budget just in general. And so that was that, and that was the, obviously, the, the impetus behind the accounting piece, the timekeeping piece. We can have probably any member of city staff give you issues that they've had with our current timekeeping software. And so that adds up as time wasted dealing with something that they should not have to deal with. And so, yes, attendance on demand is 4,800 a year. We're not going to find anything else for cheaper, but it, that does come at this kind of unrealized cost of the, the frustrations that pretty much all of our city staff have had with trying to accurately account for their time.
Just to, could I do some quick math? Kyle, before we move on to Councilmember Ball. So 50,000 minus 23,000 minus 48,000 is 22.8. Divided by 52 weeks a year, divided by 40 hours each week. So that's paying $10.67 per hour over the, per hour, per year for this software is what it boils down to, which is much less than we could pay one person to do all of the manual stuff that the directors are having to do, correct?
Um, yeah, so I, I will trust you on that math, but yes, the, the, the short answer is yes, absolutely.
Councilmember Ball.
I came up with 22.2, but anyway, so.
It's close.
Then what did you do? You divided by 52 weeks in the year.
Divided by 40 hours a week. So it's less than what I had then.
So then these would go away, the Springbrook and.
And attendance on demand, that is correct.
And Mayor Pro Tim, to answer your question on the third item, See Click Fix, again, falls into the same category. We're replacing TextMyGov. So the net cost increase there is $3,200. And, and this is essentially our service request management system. And so I, I don't know. We, we've not seen any real dividends from that yet. It's only been live for about a month. So it's hard to say. But it's a net cost increase of about $3,200.
And to, to maybe just give you an answer to that question is, if, if we did not have the timekeeping and accounting software going into 2026, we would be okay. It would not, it, it would be a setback. But we have Springbrook and we have attendance on demand and we would, we would proceed with those.
Excuse me, Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, so Kyle, so what, what is the name of the software then that's being proposed to?
Uh, so we've had three identified. We have not chosen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
So within, within those, those three, because I'm noticing we've got Resource X that's just for soft, for priority-based budgeting for 60 grand, is, is this new software for the 50 grand? Is that going to have a budgeting element to it? I know you had said in the past, you've, you've had to do a lot of spreadsheets and kind of finagle it with what you have now. What, what kind of budgeting offerings do those have?
And so the expectation would that they, they would have those services built in.
So, so would we need to continue to carry forward the Resource X as well?
So that's a multi-year effort to try to retool the way we even look at the budget and how we prioritize. And so I would say that there wouldn't be any sunset on the Resource X provision, certainly in the near term. If there was an opportunity to combine those two, absolutely, yes, we would do that.
So you're saying we could get rid of the Resource X?
I, I would not make any promises on that. So Resource X and that priority-based budgeting ethos and that mindset is a multi-year effort that we want to kind of fully see through. And, and likely what you would see is heading into the next budget, you're, you're going to see the, the programs and the cost of those programs make their way up towards the front of the budget. So that's what you're seeing first. And you're making decisions based on increases and decreases in programs instead of individual line items. And so that's a, that's a multi-year effort to get to that point. If there is a, if there is a point where we can, if that's fully implemented and that can transition to our new accounting and timekeeping software, we'd absolutely have the discussion of offloading Resource X if those two things could happen.
Mark, you want to weigh in on that?
There's, there's also the possibility, depending on which of these is selected, that you'll get a discount on Resource X because it's integrated.
All right, Councilmember Kurtz.
Mark, can you talk a little bit about the benefits of Resource X and any evidence-based decision-making we'd be able to do in the future budget?
Sure. And, and I would argue that we're already making evidence-based decisions. But to, to answer that question going forward, Um, but uh, to, to answer that question going forward, the expectation over time is that we're able to see uh, direct alignment with our strategic plan. And as that evolves over time, the budget is remaining aligned um, with our strategic plan. And if you'll remember, and we can bring it up if we need to, we don't need to do that right now, Evan, unless uh, we, we want to get into the discussion. If, if you remember the slide from the uh, first conversation um, where right now, or I should say in the 2025 budget, seventy-six percent of our budget is invested in programs that are most or more aligned with our strategic plan, which means only twenty-four percent of our budget is invested in those lower priorities. And so we're already using it to make investments that are highly aligned with our strategic plan and we would continue to propose to do that um, on a year-to-year basis. If you'll remember some of the specific items that were put through the um, request process that made their way through the initial round of review and into the preliminary budget, you had things like increases to uh, the community events program that were designed to accommodate the city's twenty-fifth anniversary celebration and some changes that we were proposing to some other events, namely uh, Home for the Holidays and some others. Um, there was also uh, the request for a new police officer that is in that highly aligned category, those kinds of things. Um, long-term, you would expect, and, and we've made this um, I don't know if commitment is the right word. We, we, but we've certainly set a goal um, to target um, a ten percent overall um, efficiency in budgeting, meaning that um, you would have this ten percent, call it savings, over time as you're moving investments from lower priorities to higher priorities and then potentially eliminating lower priority investments.
Thank you, I think that was what I was looking for because what I recall about um, Resource X was just that it would really help us make decisions in the budget based less on any sort of um, assumptions we had about the line item and more based on facts and expenditures and tying them all together, making everything tied up with a very nice bow. Um, and one of the things that you said stuck out to me that right now we have twenty percent um, of our budget is aligned with our lower priority items, things that are less aligned with our strategic plan. And I would rather we look at those if we're considering cost-cutting measures um, than to kind of look um, it feels a little randomly a- about whether we should take this software or that software. Um, but look at what those lower priority items are and how much they cost because maybe those are things that we should consider uh, reviewing.
Real quick, uh, can you guys promote me to panelist, please? Thanks. All right, any other questions on software piece? Hi, oh, councilmember Ball.
Well, uh, Celebrite, isn't it in the um, in here, in the, on the, in, under public safety? Or?
So if you recall uh, last week's workshop where the chief went over um, that whole collection of things that went into that digital forensics program, this was the software piece that uh, was, was proposed to help implement that. So you have not approved that yet. That is actually, I think, on the December second agenda.
Second, I believe.
For, for approval. So th- this contemplates assuming that's approved, but it's not approved yet.
Well, okay, because I talked to him about this, you know, the EMS, the whole uh, going to getting away from New World and.
It's different.
This is different.
Yes. Deputy Chief's here, if you have a question.
What's the difference?
Just real quick, this is just a new piece of software that's going to help forensically get a lot of stuff done as far as cell phones, computers and everything like that where we can do it in-house. Uh, the MDCs of what you're talking about is a totally different system that's not being put into yet, in yet. And that is going to be implemented by the county because we're on a county-wide basis with the MDCs. And that's probably looking towards the end of next year, but uh, we've already budgeted in our budget. We're going to kind of help finance that because we are going to have a bigger chunk of that and we put that in the budget as well.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Kennedy.
Um, on- once again, I, I've got a couple of questions. I apologize if the questions I ask has already been discussed and answered because my mind has been racing ahead on what we could cut and where we're going. So in doing that, I wasn't paying attention. So cut me a little slack there. What I've been seeing right now is that, is what's being proposed, is it coming forward? Is that here's sixty-one thousand dollars that could be cut from the budget? It would be salaries.
Yeah, it increments of, of that one percent, so, yeah.
Yes, but it would affect in two thousand twenty-six.
Yes.
Okay, what I'm looking at here, where I wasn't paying attention on records, is there any cuts in here that is being proposed? What is that dollar amount?
So there is, so there's offsetting reductions on what you see there. So the time uh, keeping and accounting software, that one software is replacing two other softwares. It wouldn't be a net reduction in the budget. It's, it's a little bit over, it's about twenty-one thousand dollars additional for what is proposed for 2026. Um, and then the discussion was um, it, what, could we cut potentially one of those? Um, and then we went through the back and forth on each one of those on the, on why we wanted to keep those, so.
I, I appreciate that, but also as a business owner, been doing this for a lot of years. There's, under no circumstance do I anticipate that you guys sat down and spent a lot of time and effort thinking about software you could buy and not be of benefit to the citizens.
Correct.
Correct. So I'm not really in favor of getting too excited about cutting in that area, which is if it's state-of-the-art, then what we need to keep pace, not only from other cities and stuff, but pace with our police department and everything that goes on for the benefit of our citizens who pay our salary and why we're all sitting here on it. One of those is I'm not in favor of cutting salaries. Because in my company, when I had one employee, you're a hundred and nine, the last thing my focus ever was on, how could I cut salaries? What had to be done is that how could I cut services that will still provide revenue of income so I can handle the increase of salaries? If not, I would lose those people. So I appreciate this, but this is not high on my priority. When I look through our budget and I notice in two thousand twenty-seven, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated to look at the possibility of where we're going to put a pool. Now that's two thousand twenty-seven. There's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is being proposed, is that where we can put a pool? Well, I can do that for twenty-five dollars and it won't cost you anything. We're spending additional hundred and eighty thousand dollars being proposed for Fourth of July fireworks and also possibly a drone, which I never heard anything about drone and I've never missed a meeting in the last twenty years that it only came up a few meetings ago. But I see an increase of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. That's where I start looking at as a business owner, as a councilmember, is that can we cut there? And not cut our salaries to tell our employees that, hey, you're doing a great job, but still we need to cut back a little bit, not cut back on software, which would hopefully enhance the job of our employees, that they can do a better job. Let's, in my opinion, look at areas that we can cut that are the, as Councilman uh, Kurtz had said, Mark, if there's twenty-six percent that falls in that category, let's start looking there that where we can cut that type of stuff. Let's, let's not do it in the essentials that we have to have to be able to be successful.
Mayor Protem.
I just want to make sure that we're um, that we're addressing this issue um, in an accurate way. And what I mean by that is that I don't think anybody up here is talking about cutting salaries or cutting budgets. What, what the discussion that we're having here tonight is whether we're going to pare back the increase, not whether we're going to cut the budget, we're not cutting the budget. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the proposal that is before us contemplates increasing the budget about seventeen percent over last year or over this year, I should say. The budget doesn't become the budget until we all approve the budget. So what we're talking about here tonight with potential pairbacks or, or, or reducing a, a, a dollar amount here or there is specifically talking about taking down the increase. We're still going to increase. I think even if we do all the tinkering around the sides that we're talking about here tonight, the budget is still going to increase. So I often call uh, call this um, when we're talking about cutting a proposal, cutting back a proposed increase is a, a great uh, way to, to speak about uh, budgeting, but it is not necessarily uh, an accurate way to speak about it because again, we are not cutting the budget. All we're doing is talking about how much we're going to increase it by. Are we going to increase it by ten percent? Are we going to increase it by fifteen percent? Are we going to increase it by twenty percent? Or are we going to increase it what we did last year, which was a heck of a lot more than that? So I just, I wanted to make sure that that marker was laid out there as we have these discussions.
Can I make a suggestion? And this goes back to the, to the first meeting. I can, I can say that um, from a, from an overall increase perspective, we've got several things that we can talk about in the capital facilities plan. We have the proposed three percent market-based adjustment that we've touched on earlier tonight. We have the change that's associated with the collective bargaining agreement. And then we have itemized uh, increases or changes. We can go through those if you would like to do that, to talk about those specific items from an increase perspective uh, to, to have that discussion. Um, that's, that's, I think, kind of what we contemplated as coming into this process. So Evan, if you want to pull up that presentation, we can go from top to bottom and address each one of those. It looks like councilmember Kurtz has a question.
Go ahead.
Well, I had a, I just had a follow-up question to Mayor Protem. So the seventeen percent, can you show me what page that's on?
So I was, I was looking at the 2025 adopted seven point three, going to the seventeen point three on page thirty-one, budget summary by expenditures. So in 2024, we were at twelve point nine, in 2025, we were at seventeen point three and at 2026, the proposed here is nineteen point nine. If you look at seventeen point three to nineteen point nine is what, how I was doing that math.
It's a little less than fifteen percent. Okay.
And then the twelve to seventeen to nineteen was um, the one I was talking about at the last meeting.
Yeah, ju- ju- just a point, we also always have to remember that you have to look, we do have anomalies every year. If we go to, look at the twenty twenty-four actual versus the twenty twenty-five adopted, obviously there's a three point two million dollar change in the finance line. Those were transfers out for capital projects. That's not normal, um, our normal, well, I mean, we've had other things along the way. But sometimes when you, those fluctuations need some asterisk when you're talking about them. They're not necessarily all operating costs, even though it is the general fund. Uh, councilmember Kurtz.
Well, and I, I think that was my follow-up question slash point was that we've, we've signed an agreement for the public safety and that was one of the significant increases. So I mean, I feel like with some of those changes, we've already agreed to them. So I mean, those are not things that we can cut.
That, that's correct on the, on the, on the CBA, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
But I think they account for some of the increase that we're talking about.
They, they do, yes. Evan, if you want to go to, I don't know what slide it is, but it's the itemized list of new items beyond that. Right there. So these are, and, and they're, I believe, two pages of these. The, these constitute ninety-five percent of the uh, new money outside of the three percent market adjustment and the increase associated with the, with the collective bargaining agreement. So these are individual things that were not budgeted in 2025 that have been requested for inclusion in the 2026 budget. And you can see the very top one there is a, is a zero net increase. It's a, it's an increase with a corresponding decrease. Um, and so starting with the add and expand events, that's the one that councilmember Kennedy just brought up with respect to the net increase requested there of a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Jen, would you mind coming up to the mic and kind of helping walk council through some of these? And if there are questions about that one ninety-two delta, we're happy to answer and talk about the impact and what that is associated with.
So um, yeah, are you, you were talking about, sorry, I was writing when you were talking. You were referring to the public art and the?
So the first one that we're on is the second item that says add and expand events for a hundred ninety-two thousand.
So as you stated before, we're looking to build on um, the winter event situation now that Winter Glow is no longer around and that was an added expense, um, as well as the city birthday on the Fourth of July. Um, we view that increase as a one-time expense increase. I don't know that we, at this point, foresee that being a yearly um, annual thing unless something changes next year and it's requested to have everything come back, but yeah. Yes.
Uh, Jen, can you remind us, I, I think when we, you got up here last time and talked about this, uh, it seemed like it was about a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars difference or something plus of that uh, between a drone slash fireworks.
Correct.
Um, so i- in my opinion, I don't, I don't think we need to move forward with the drones. Uh, I mean, that would save us a hundred thousand right there. That, that would be my opinion.
Okay, so remember, okay, so we're hoping this is our last budget meeting. So I heard that's your opinion, but my suggestion would be if you feel strongly about something, make a motion.
Make a motion to remove the cost for the drones from this line item. And I believe that's uh, five, seven, one, zero, zero, four, one, oh, five. Uh, it's page seventy-six.
Seventy-six, okay. All right, let's get there, hold on.
What page is that?
Seventy-six.
I think we need to center first.
Yeah. So clip for clarification before we get or don't get a second. You would be, is the request on page seventy, seventy-six to reduce count five, seven, one, zero, zero, forty-one dash oh, five?
By the amount of the drones, whatever that amount is.
Do we have a second? Not, not.
I'll second.
I have a second for, should we get a lot of discussion?
Okay, so we have a second from councilmember Kennedy. All right, so on the topic of um, removing the drone aspect of the city birthday, um, councilmember Kurtz.
And so is the dollar amount a hundred thousand dollars?
It's right, yeah. What was, would, hundred thousand?
Hundreds, oh, okay.
Okay, any other question? Uh, we've got councilmember Kennedy and Mayor Protem.
Uh, I, I'm in a little more, I, I'm in favor of more pres- precise what the dollar amount is. I just want to say a hundred grand, if, if it's ninety-five, it's a hundred and six, a hundred and eight. I want to know what that is. Now, I know there's an increase of a hundred eighty thousand dollars. So if a hundred thousand dollars round figures a drone, what's the other eighty? I would like to analyze that, what is that breakdown of a hundred eighty? I'm certainly in favor of no drone because of the cost saving and that alone can take care of the salary aspect. I just want a little more defined what the other eighty thousand is.
I would have to put something together to show the breakout of how everything is portioned out between all the events.
I appreciate that. I, I feel for me moving forward, I think that's, that's important because if we could cut the drones is one thing, but there might be another, who knows? Of that other eighty that we could cut and still have a Fourth of July, still have what we've done in the past. Plus, I do have one concern and that is, well, it might be just a one-time expense. It doesn't work that way in government. Once it's there, the nose of the camel is in the tent.
Yes.
There's only a period of time before the rest of that little creature is there. If not, the goat runs to my garage. So, for apprehensive, I'm saying that's a one-time expense.
Well, it, most in the, in this case, I mean, we have to remember twenty twenty-five is the city's birthday and the, and the our nation's birthday, that's why this one lump, one time. So until we get to another major birthday for the country and I think all of us will be long gone, I won't have it again, but I won't be around, I don't imagine you guys. Um, all right, Mayor Protem was next and I don't know if councilmember.
I plan to be here for the tricentennial.
I, I am not.
Mike, Mike's question, um, and this probably is a question for Kyle. Kyle, did we determine if we can use the tourism um, promotion funds for these events? for these events?
Yes, we can.
The capital, just to clarify, capital fund or operating?
Operating.
Not the capital.
So 115?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, what page are you on?
Uh, 87. Okay.
That it, all right, then I think I've got Councilmember Ball and then Councilmember Spencer next.
Oh, so Jen, okay, so if we did indeed remove the drone show, but still, there's, there's enough in there. Didn't you kind of budget a little bit or a little bit more for fireworks so they could just be a little bit more spectacular?
And then again, for the winter event that we didn't have a budget line for previously, other than the 10,000 or 12,000 for Winter Glow.
Right, okay, so I'm not sure where he's getting the $80,000, but the 260, uh, minus 86.5 is 173.5. I don't know where.
So in the past years, I think if you look on the line items, last year we budgeted
Is that what you're talking about? Oh.
Yeah, so we went from 80, the 86.5 to
260.
260.
Yeah.
And $80,000 more.
I think it, it, I need to double check this number, so don't quote me on this, but I think it was actually more like 160 for the drones. So it wasn't that, and then the other 20 to 30,000, we were going to budget for the winter flow or the winter event next, next winter.
160?
It's six, yeah.
For the drones? Good grief.
I need to confirm that.
Wow.
Hence the breakdown, but.
Okay, I think we had Councilmember Spencer next, and then Councilmember Kurtz, and then I'll go to Councilmember.
Yeah, I, I think I'll just reiterate, and that, that's why I didn't make a motion initially. I wanted to get kind of some consensus on that before we made the motion. But, uh, it sounds to me like it's, it's pretty clear that, uh, we can back those funds out. If it's 160 or 100, whatever that amount is, if we want to then talk about taking it out of tour- tourism promotion, then that's another, that's another story because we haven't used that in X number of years. Um, but, uh, but I think regardless of what else is in that budget and, and what those items are and what we want to discuss there, but if we want to move forward, we need to start taking some action. So if we want to remove the drones from the, the current proposed budget, my suggestion is we, we go ahead and do that.
I will, I will comment too, that the drones are simply a suggestion of staff.
Right.
There's no commitment, there's no, there's nothing that says, there's a reason why we need to do it. It's just, it's huge, over the top. It was a suggestion from our power technicians because they also do drones, um, they're new and up and coming. So, but there's nothing that says we have to do that.
Exactly.
Okay, I think next we had Councilmember Kurtz. I got you online. I don't remember what I was gonna ask. You don't remember? Okay, we will come back to you. Then we had Councilmember Kennedy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, okay, whatever the dollar amount is, it's a hundred or 160,000 dollars. I think that's great if we could do something like that, or we can zero it on those numbers. But having said that, I have a concern when I hear from over here and I hear from over here, well, hold it, maybe we take the funds out of the other funds to cover these. Uh, no, come on. If we're going to cut something like that, let's cut it and leave it that way. I'm bothersome when I give the example of that. It was like when we had the utility tax and became so important to get rid of it. But we got rid of it by creating another tax to offset the revenue we got out of that. So, come on, if we're going to cut 160,000 dollars, whatever it is, let's don't start thinking of it, oh, we could still have that and we could take the funds out of somewhere else. My question would be that particular fund, what else can we spend the money out of there for?
So tourism promotion, yeah, so we have two separate funds dedicated to tourism promotion. We have called an operating fund, and that's, uh, Fund 115. We have a capital fund and that's Fund 116. And then we contemplated at the last meeting, taking 500,000 from Fund 116, that's a tourism capital and prepaying the Trailhead bond. Uh, tour, uh, Fund 115, the operating one, uh, we contemplate a, a high spend annually in that because we don't know what sort of applications from, um, from community entities we're going to get. And so, um, historically, that's been for, um, things that the Kiwanis has put on, or the Rotary Club has put on, or Winter Glow. Um, and so we're replacing that spend from Winter Glow with, with our event this year, and that was approved by council last month. And so we have all sorts of community events that are really tailored towards, uh, that fund for, for use of those funds.
Uh, next we had Mayor Protem.
Seeing as though the lodgery, uh, lodge lodging tax advisory committee typically decides the applications for those.
Yeah.
So how would it work if we wanted to? If the city was proposing doing some sort of expanded 4th of July or, um, or anniversary show, would that, would we be able to just make the decision and move those funds over? Or would it have to go through the lodging tax advisory committee?
The RCW says the municipality can use those funds directly. Uh, we have not historically done that. And so a policy might be contemplated that, um, just for transparency sake, the city goes through the same process everybody else does, and the lodging tax considers that. Lodging tax committee considers those.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and Councilmember Dunn, we haven't heard from you. Anything you want to add?
Uh, yeah, I speak in opposition to the motion. Uh, do you have Mark the, um, program data and priority alignment for community event, please?
So the, uh, the, the program information, uh, when you, when you say the program data, um, are you?
A quartile position aligned or less aligned?
So, uh, it would be, it would have been good of me to remind everyone of the color scheme. Um, so the, the dark purple is most aligned, the light purple is more aligned. The blue is less aligned, the teal is least aligned. So the purples are more aligned, the blues are less aligned.
So in analysis, the community events are more aligned, for example, than, um, pro shop operations.
Yes.
So I guess I'm a little skeptical of seeing this as a target for, uh, reduce, reduction in the overall. Um, nonetheless, I actually foresee this, uh, specifically the year 2026 to be a really important one for the city. And I support, uh, the additional effort to create an event for our community. So, um, I support what has been proposed by staff as an amount, uh, in reflection of what we need as a, as a city.
All right, Councilmember Kurtz, you remember?
Well, it's a different question. So, uh, Kyle helped me learn a lot about both of these funds this week. Um, and so for capital, this is a hypothetical, but say somewhere along the way, we decided we wanted to have drones. Is that a capital expense that we could use under this? Like if we wanted to invest in that, if that's a thing?
Only if we purchased them.
Right.
So, so I, yeah, I would contemplate a drone show as an operating cost.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean we couldn't use 115.
Correct, yep.
We just can't use 116.
Correct.
Yes, storage might be an issue for that many drones.
Well, so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no, 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 I, um, a drone is a, would it be a capital expenditure or an operating cost? It's a thing. But to me, that means capital, but I might be wrong, totally.
It just, it depends on our use. So if we're purchasing, it becomes capital because we own it.
Okay.
Um, if we're, call it renting the service, that's an operator.
Yeah, it would be a service for one time.
Yeah, one, yeah, one, yes, now I get it.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, all right. Any more comments on this motion? If not, I will go to a vote. And the motion was to reduce Fund 47, 571004105 um, from $260,000 by the amount, um, uh, proposed for the drone show, final number to be determined. Accurate enough, can we just say?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Can I request a voice vote?
Yes. All right, so let's go around, um, and just yay or nay, Councilmember Kurtz?
Nay.
Councilmember Ball?
Did you repeat it again? I'm sorry.
The, the motion is to reduce the line item 571004105 at the top of page 76 from the proposed spending amount of $260,000 by the amount of, um, of what it would cost to do a drone show in addition to or in place of fireworks, uh, final amount to be determined.
Yay.
All right, Councilmember, I'm Mayor Protem.
Pass.
Can't, 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 can't.
I know. Uh, yay.
Councilmember Spencer?
Yay.
Councilmember Dunn?
Nay.
And Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 4-2. All right, so we will be reducing that line. Um, Jen, if you could report back what that
Sure.
approximate figure is. I know we're not going to nail it on the head, but you've got some ideas.
Yep, in fact, I can run back to my office and get that number before the end of the evening if you'd like.
Kind of be awesome. Okay, moving on. Um, so we've got, we still have our list up here.
So we have the addition of one law enforcement officer is next on the list.
Can I just make one more quick comment? Um, so I was, uh, I didn't know for sure which way I wanted to vote on that, but I would just encourage the next council to think about the possibility of doing something um, more special than just a typical fireworks show for 2026, but using Fund 115 as a budget amendment next year to do that. I think that's a better way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
And I think that's one of the reasons why I voted nay was so that we have the flexibility to move things around if we, um, want to and depend on what the, um, the proposal and the actual dollar figure ends up being at that time.
Thank you. All right, so the next line, uh, is Mark, uh, called out, there's, there's the additional of, um, one law enforcement officer. Is there any discussion or anything on that?
And to keep you oriented, deep purple is most aligned.
Mayor Protem?
So, um, I'm glad this is on here. I, I do have a question, perhaps Deputy Chief can answer this. So last year, we, um, we spent a lot of time on the budget last year. We, um, Councilmember Spencer made the motion, I think most of us supported it, to increase, um, the police budget to an even 6 million. And the purpose at that time for that was to hire another officer. So I guess my question was, did we do that?
We did, and we haven't got, then we have another officer that's needed to be done. And if we can, if the reason, the reason for that is in order to put somebody back into detectives. So we have a little bit more to follow up with our detectives because we're getting a lot more crimes against people, crime, you know, internet crimes and stuff that's going to require a lot more background work, a lot more detective work. So in order to have it and make that, in order to establish that, we'd like to ensure we replace the guys that are leased out on the road in order to put that one detective back there in order to follow up a little bit more of the crime.
So this would be in addition to the one that we added this year?
Yes, correct.
Okay, uh, I guess my second question, it's not on here, but it is somewhat related. Um, on, let me get to it here, on page the police budget, which is 9, thank you. Uh, while I'm finding it here, um, Deputy Chief, how many, uh, police cars do we have?
Uh, currently, we're about 32.
32, okay.
Yes.
And so when it says, that's what I'm looking for here. Um, when it says on page you know, bear with me here.
Cars are.
Yeah, where's, where are cars? Oh, here it is, okay. Um, fifth, uh, account five, this is page 62, account 52110480. Um, the proposed purchase of three new special purpose vehicles is part of the current vehicle rotation plan. So we are rotating out about 10% of the cars each year.
By two, because anytime you get over 150,000 miles, you start having issues with the vehicles, and that's where we're at with several of our vehicles now.
How many do we have over 150?
Uh, we've got three, I take that back, two over 150 and three or five that are over 130 right now.
Okay, okay, thank you.
No, um, so that was, that line item is actually maintenance, the actual cars are in the next page, top of the next page.
Yeah, 62.
Yeah, 63.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, yeah, yeah, sorry about that.
Councilmember Ball?
So this new officer for 2026, you're going to promote somebody to detective and then hire this person to be, or?
Correct, we're moving one person into detectives into an investigator position
Uh huh.
and then hiring another officer in order to backfill that position on the street, so we're not losing anybody off the streets.
Oh, okay, okay.
Any other questions?
Mayor Protem, if I can add, uh, in addition to the officer, uh, in 2025, we also added a crime analyst
Right.
with that budget increase.
Okay.
All right, guys go through a lot of cars.
Unfortunately, yes.
Seems to be more and more.
True.
Lots of chases. All right, no, if nobody else has any other comments on, um, that line item, next would be public art?
Any discussion?
But just, just to clarify, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, so, so this particular color says less aligned, right?
Less aligned, yes.
Okay, so, um, I, I think, uh, as a council, we kind of arbitrarily threw a number at a percentage of something, I don't remember what it was.
2% of sales tax revenue.
Okay, so, um, you know, perhaps we have to relook at that. Uh, if it's less aligned, we just decided to move forward with it, but, um, perhaps we need to make some cuts here.
Got what page?
Yeah.
You forgot what page the Parks and Arts plans on.
That's what I'm trying to find too.
Let's race. Thank you.
Boy, I was way past it.
Thank you.
87, still not there. Yeah, there was, there was the actual plan, though, with the more detail. That's not 87.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's what I'm looking for. That's okay, that gets us one part.
So we have the Parks and Arts, uh, strategic plan that starts on, I think, 158.
Thank you, that's what I was looking. Close.
And there's some really, really small font, I think on 162, that identifies the actual projects.
Okay, all right, so yes, we're going to tackle this. Why don't we start my computer?
So real quick question, Kyle, while we're trying to find this. 161. Oh, yeah, okay. Um, the, the one the 120 where does the 127 go in this? Am I not seeing it? I see 163.
Uh, so these would be new projects, um, so we're going to have some rollover from 2025. So those numbers will not match up.
Okay.
What's proposed is new and what's proposed is rolling over from 25 to 26.
And does the number appear on the screen, the 127, does that represent what Councilmember Spencer was talking about, the 2%?
Uh, so that would actually be, um, actual cost of the projects. The 2% is about 140,000.
So that 127 does not, is separate from the, the 2%?
Correct.
Okay.
Not following.
Uh, so the, so the public art projects that we see on this page and the, the total of 127,000 is, um, contemplated new projects, uh, from, uh, Parks and Arts Commission
Right.
that would not have been rolled over from 2025. If I'm reading that right, Jen.
And it would be in addition to the 2% that would be?
So how much are we, how much is in that? I, how much is in that?
So the expense, so I, I think we would need to separate the expense from the, from the revenue. So the revenue, the 2%, uh, we just made it to say it's, it's, I think it's at about, it's 143,000 is 2%. And so that's, that's our contribution to Parks and Arts
Yeah.
on an annual basis with the incremental increase and whatever that sales and use tax collected is. Um, and then Jen can expand further. Um, if that doesn't align with what we put in priority-based budgeting, uh, feel free to expand on.
I'm, so I'm not, I'm not quite sure on that 127, but I'm showing that, um, in our actual budget document on page 15, it's 158 for us. Um, for 26 is 207.
There says 163.5.
For what?
I'm saying 157.5.
157 is 2025.
Yeah.
Oh.
Correct.
2026 says 163.5.
Correct.
So how much are you rolling, Jen? That, your, your number probably has what we're
We're rolling over about 100, this one shows 100 and it's 107,000, 110,000 dollars. So, so if you look, again, I don't know what if you look at 2026, the first 1, 2, 3, 4 items are carryovers to the tune of 110,000.
The 40, the 30, the 15, and the 3,500?
Yeah.
So those
Maybe they have a different document than what we have in here.
So the, the 127, from a budgetary perspective, constitutes the amount over what would have been anticipated as a revenue contribution plus rollover projects. plus rollover projects. So the one twenty-seven constitutes the increase over those amounts that are assigned to projects in twenty twenty-six. It is a budget increase that is requested based upon the anticipated revenue and the rolled over projects.
So we're going over the two percent that we talked about.
Not, not going over. It, it is a, it is a combination of the rollover plus the increase that constitutes the two percent contribution coming from, uh, revenue. It's a budgetary increase. It's not an expenditure increase, it's a budgetary increase.
I think we're all.
I got, I mean, essentially what we're doing is
And I'm good at this.
incentivizing them for not um, spending it before they lose it.
Correct. You're carrying over some budget and you're accounting for the proposed projects in twenty twenty-six.
And is that one sixty-three-five or what you have or?
It should be one hundred, the one hundred and ten thousand, what we're carrying over. Not the one sixty-three.
So we wouldn't be in violation then of our, of our ordinance that's two percent.
No.
Okay. That's the, that's the key.
Yeah.
And in reality, um, even though we're proposing, we're carrying over the hundred, when we did the budget, we hadn't done, I don't think we had any projects that had been bailed out at that time. This was clear back in August. And to, to date now, we've got several projects that have already been paid for. So it won't, at, at the time we did the budget, one-ten was our best guess and we hoped that we would finish projects by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five and have them paid for, um, which we will have. And we've already made a dent on several projects. It's just that that's what we had to go with at the time. That was our sort of worst case scenario.
Got it. Thank you.
And so Parks and Arts have had subsequent discussions since this document was put out. And the, um, the, call it the finish date of some of those projects adjusts. And so we still have everything accounted for in this budget. They're just shifting when those are actually gonna hit.
Can I get to you, Councilmember Kurtz? Go ahead.
I know this isn't the most purplest of purple line item, um, but I feel like there's a whole nother page to this, right?
There is, but it, it, everything on the second page is less than seventeen thousand dollars.
So I guess my only thought with letting this one sit is this seems, what I recall from our discussions about art was it was literally one of the things we all agreed on, um, very affirmatively when we talked about it. Um, and I think we've had a lot of, um, very good engagement from our arts commission, engaging with the community to put forward things that make our city beautiful. And if there are other things that we could cut, like anything else that's lower down, I'd be more willing to move past this one, even for the moment, to see what else is out there. Um, than to lose this one.
Well, and it also doesn't take into consideration donations that you might be getting in sponsorships.
Correct.
Which they're very successful at.
Mm-hmm, we have several.
Okay. Councilmember Ball?
Yeah, I just kinda wanna echo what, um, Councilmember Kurtz said. Because we did discuss the goats and, you know, all these various projects and how other cities have all these wonderful art projects, you know, fish on the overpasses and stuff, and we just don't have it. And yeah, I think we do need it because we need to kind of define ourselves as, you know, something.
I think the more important point is, is that it's covered by, by the, the money set aside by the council by ordinance, whether or not, no matter what the projects are, it is covered, you know. Alright, who was next? I saw a couple of hands, gonna fight it out. Go ahead, Member Tim.
Well, I was just gonna mention, by, by focusing on the one twenty-seven number, we are not, we're not saying this is a all or nothing. What we're talking about, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, is whether we're gonna increase beyond what the ordinance calls for. Right?
Not exactly. The, the, the revenue is the revenue. Whatever the revenue is, that's what's going to be, uh, are dedicated to the public art that council made the decision on regarding the two percent. The one twenty-seven constitutes an increase over the programmed budget from twenty twenty-five. So the one twenty-seven increase contemplates all of that revenue coming in at its forecasted amount plus project rollovers from twenty twenty-five. So the program amount for public art is increasing in twenty twenty-six by a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars to accommodate all of those projects. Some of those have been rolled over, some of those are proposed new for twenty twenty-six.
But again, it's within the two percent that we've set aside.
Correct. The revenue coming in is, is two percent. Yes.
I think, did you have a follow-up?
Well, I'm just, so, a- again, the, the one twenty-seven would be on top of the two percent. Right?
No, no, the two percent is compounded year after year. So you have two percent in twenty twenty-five, two percent in twenty twenty-six. The one twenty-seven constitutes an increase of the program budget over last year. So some of the projects in twenty twenty-five were not completed, they're rolling over.
Right.
And so in order to account for those rolled over projects, plus the new proposed projects in twenty twenty-six, which the proposed part, projects in twenty twenty-six do not rise to the two percent level. So you're getting some projects from twenty-five and the proposed projects for twenty-six that increases the program budget by a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay.
So the two percent we, we, in revenue for twenty-five and the two percent in revenue for twenty-six covers everything that's budgeted.
In both years.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you. Alright, uh, Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, so I, I guess the only comment I wanna make, uh, regarding that is as we're going throughout the year and we're looking at potential things that we wanna do and we sit down and say, hey, let's put together an ordinance and talk about two percent of sales tax. This is the time during the year we have to look and say, was that the right decision? Do we want to, do we want to pull that back in, in any way? And, and if so, it sounds like we'd have to, uh, update the ordinance. Is that right? If we wanted to reduce it from two percent to something different.
So I believe Sean is on, and Sean, you may wanna weigh in. My, my understanding is this was set through the budget process, it was established in the budget ordinance. I'm, I'm not sure what that means. I, I think you could probably just change it in the budget ordinance.
Okay, so it was for the budget origin.
Yeah.
So yeah, that, and that just goes right along with what I'm saying is we have to decide, do we wanna stick with that number? Or are we comfortable with that? Do we wanna go down the list and, and start looking at other things that we feel like, you know, may or may not, uh, be more aligned with, with the, uh, with the, uh, priorities of the city? So, um, so I'm, I, I would be in favor of looking at a, a possible reduction, uh, but would like to discuss that a little further.
Um, or we, uh, go ahead, Councilmember Ball?
Well, um, Jen, it's possible some of these twenty-six projects will roll over, uh, to twenty-seven. For example, the, um, oh, where is it? I can't find it, um. Oh, tentative location for the Trailhead Beam Project. Because now we're thinking it's gonna go to the new city hall. That might not even happen next year, probably won't.
Yeah, of course, we hope that we get everything accomplished next year, but the reality is there very well could be projects that don't get.
Right, so they continue to be pushed forward, yeah.
And to keep in mind with any expenditure over ten thousand dollars, it comes, it comes to the council, is it seventy-five hundred? Seventy-five hundred, sorry. Um, it has to come to the council individually anyway. So there are, if we get to the point and there's a project and things are going really crappy at the city, we look at, say, not gonna happen.
Yeah.
Right? It's not one of the higher priorities. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor. On the public art, I, I'm comfortable with the one twenty-seven. For some reason, just to reiterate, thinking back, we have projects that are hung over from two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two, some of those where we started. And it, one disadvantage we have, it takes us a long time to find an artist to do some of this stuff. So this has been a hot button, not so much the last few years, but for several years, it was a hot button. Because the question was if they were allocated thirty-five thousand dollars, did they have the right to carry it over? Does it go back into general budget? Then we have to reissue it. So I think this one twenty-seven is a cumulative of what you're saying, and I'm totally comfortable with that. Because some of these things, they have such a long tail by the time it gets done on it, so I, I'm comfortable with that.
Councilmember Spencer?
Well, I, I will just say, uh, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with rolling budgets over. Um, so I, I don't have any problem with that. The question is, is the dollar amount that we're allocating each year, uh, available to the Parks and Arts? Is that, uh, is that a number we're comfortable with and it was a hundred and forty?
Correct.
Okay. So that's the question before the council. Are we okay with a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year? Uh, if we're gonna put a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year in art up against sixty or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in pay increases, which one would we prefer? I think that's the important question we need to ask ourselves. When we're asking ourselves, what are the real priorities? If we are gonna look at making any sort of cuts in the budget, we have to start matching those things up. Because earlier I heard, well, you know, we don't wanna touch anything with, with, uh, employee wages. Uh, and, and I don't necessarily wanna do that either. Um, but to reiterate what Mayor Pro Tim said, we're talking about increases. Everybody's getting an increase with that COLA of two point seven percent plus a two percent step. Everybody's already getting an increase. Nobody's saying, hey, uh, not only are we proposing no COLA and no two, two percent step, we're actually proposing we cut wages. Nobody's saying that. Okay, so, uh, again, we have to say, alright, are we, are we okay with, uh, sixty, uh, a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty thousand dollars more? The two point seven COLA and the two percent, um, step, are we okay with that? Um, but we don't wanna make cuts elsewhere like art or some of these other, uh, expenses or like the drones we talked about. So I, I think we just have to sit down and say, alright, well, which ones are critical to the function of our government? And which, which ones are perhaps would be nice to have, but we don't need it at the moment.
Councilmember Kennedy, and then Councilmember Dunn.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna reiterate, the one twenty-seven I'm comfortable with for the simple reason is that the art that we're looking at is something that once it's there, it's there for the next fifty or a hundred years. It's not going anywhere. Earlier, we put a lot of discussion into possibly a hundred sixty thousand dollars for a drone event, which would last one day. And we would never, ever see it again. And then what, what concerns me is that we vote to majority, could once you get rid of that, at the same time, we have a discussion, or we could still do the drone and draw it out of another tax avenue. I am not in favor of, let's don't cut public art a nickel. Let's get something there that is permanent and identifies the city. That drone is gone. And no one's gonna remember it other than, boy, they relate, spent a buttload of money for what?
Councilmember Dunn, you're next.
Uh, I have no objections to the public art amount, I think it's appropriate.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Objection to the term buttload. I do think it's important to, um, you know, just piggyback off of what, um, Jed had to say. Um, I think it's important to take a look at what's happening around us. And the county is lowering its, its budget by, I think, was it seven percent? Seven percent? City of Spokane is lowering its budget because it's having all sorts of problems. I, I think from everything that I'm reading, we are headed into possibly a recession in the next year. And so we need to, in my opinion, uh, be very careful about where we're spending and what we're spending and how much we're spending. Because we do not wanna be caught in a situation where a year from now, the council is talking about how to make actual cuts and, and cut actual people from the budget because this council did not properly prepare for that. So whatever we decide to do tonight in any of these categories, I just think it's critically important that we don't get ahead out in front of our skis here, uh, and, and make a situation potentially next year that much worse. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtz?
I absolutely one hundred percent agree with everything the Mayor Pro Tim said. And that is why I still have concerns about paying off Trailhead early. That's gonna be the voucher at the next meeting. And I think that by continuing to do something that is a want versus a need, when we know that there are potentially uncertain times ahead of us, I think that that is, we're talking about COLAs, we're talking about cutting art, we're talking about some of those things. And we still have five hundred thousand dollars that we do not have to spend.
Point taken. And I'll, I will just remind everybody, we never know from year to year whether there's a recession expected or not, what could happen. You look back at twenty twenty, who would have guessed? Um, and, you know, A, luckily, we, we didn't have to dip into any of our restricted reserve funds. Um, luckily, and we did better than most, you know, our city revenues were much higher than we originally anticipated because, you know, a lot of, a lot of extra sales tax, people were shipping things in. Um, but we also, you know, we, we didn't cut people, we didn't cut hours, but we did definitely cut some services. Um, and those are the tough decisions that have to be made, you know, if and when things like that happen. I think we're in a good position where we, we, we reserve-wise. Um, and we don't, never wanna tap into that, I get that. And I, you know, totally understand where Mayor Pro Tim's coming from. But we also have to remember again, this is a budget, it doesn't mean we have to spend it all. And those are the tough decisions that come in those times. If that happens, that the council at the time, you know, we don't, we don't approve a, you know, um, spending on X, Y, and Z. Um, we, we don't do anything at Fort DeJai, who knows, right? Those are the decisions that come on a case-by-case basis if we get into something like a recession. Mayor, uh, uh, Spencer?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a, a couple of things. One, we agreed in our last budget for twenty twenty-five to put a million dollars towards Trailhead. Uh, so we've walked that back in this budget. Uh, also, um, as a regular citizen, before I was on the council, uh, I heard the promises from the, uh, council that, that they were going to pay off, uh, Trail, the Trailhead loan at an accelerated rate. And thus far, um, other than these proposals that at least I'm trying to push forward, um, to make good on that promise, a promise I didn't make. I wasn't the one that moved forward with, with Trailhead initially. Um, but, but that was a promise we made to the citizens. And thus far, I've seen zero plans uh, other than these few, uh, movements toward making, uh, uh, accelerated payments towards Trailhead. And again, if we had used other funds from our budget at the time, we wouldn't have those sitting there to throw at art or at other things. Um, so again, we have to take a step back and say, alright, yes, we do have additional funds that we wouldn't have had if we had put those toward Trailhead in the first place. Um, and so now we're proposing to, to put them into increased wages and in increased art, hiring a new golf professional. We're doing all these things. And in my opinion, the responsible thing to do is move quickly to, to pay down that Trailhead debt, which is what we promised the citizens. Thank you.
We promised to try. It's a big difference. It's, it's a big difference. It is. Um, Mayor Pro Tim?
I'll just, uh, chime in here real quick. Yes, we are spending five hundred thousand dollars out of a fund that we cannot spend really on anything else, or at least any, not, not very many things, to pay down Trailhead, which as Kyle mentioned last week, could save the city one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So that, and that's assuming concurrent payments after that as well, so.
So, I mean, it's not as if, if we don't decide to make that payment, we're suddenly gonna have five hundred thousand dollars more in our general fund. We're not. That, that money is in, uh, Fund one sixteen, which is what we approved last week to take it out of.
Correct.
Um, not the general fund.
I will, before we go to Councilmember Kurtz, I'll remind everybody the que- question is public art. If we wanna talk Trailhead payments, we can have that discussion a little bit farther down the road or next, whatever you prefer. But we are talking about public art. So go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz.
Well, but I feel like we're still, okay, so I, I heard, I heard what you said, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, but I did, um, reach out to Kyle to ask what other things that we could pay for out of, um,
Tourism cap.
Capital fund. Um, and things that I, so he, he taught me a lot um, about what capital, anyway, it doesn't matter. We could be paying for mowers for Trailhead. We could be paying for capital expenditures for Trailhead improvements to Trailhead. Um, trying to think of what else was on the list, but there were also some suggestions that our golf pro had about capital improvements that we might need to do in the future for Trailhead, that that particular fund could be used for. And please correct me if I said any of that wrong, Kyle.
Um, no, no, that's all correct. Um, it's all assuming that we can, um, we can tie those improvements to increased tourism. And so that science is very inexact. And so, um, if we say, okay, we're gonna go buy the top-of-the-line mower and the Trailhead course is gonna look better than anything around us, does that result in additional heads and beds? And that's kinda like what we talked about. That's a very loose tangential relationship there that we can make. Um, and so that, along with, yes, additional, um, items, potentially, um, I, I think one of them that was contemplating was, uh, um, was collaborating with Visit Spokane on any potential, uh, existing facilities that we can upgrade to increase tourism. And so none of that is contemplated. We don't have any other uses, um, contemplated for that. But, um, Councilmember Kurtz and I went back and forth on potential uses.
And I think my point in saying that is that I feel like perhaps we haven't thought about how to use this fund in a different way. And while paying down Trailhead is an acceptable use for it, given the economic situation that we have been told by our city administrator, we are in it regarded to some other parts and pieces that are funded out of our general fund. Being able to pay for some of those things, if they meet the requirements for RCW and can be paid out of this other fund makes some sense to me to keep those, to be able to use them from this fund that we can is a very narrow scope. So that we have the ability to use funds for things that we need in the general fund, which is a more broad scope. And so that is why I was talking about this because it came up. And then if we need to go back to public art, we can.
All right. So any more discussion on the public art line item? Not hearing any.
May I may I add the drones are one hundred and fifty thousand.
All right. You were close.
And how long a show is that?
Uh, it's about twenty minutes.
Light a match.
Did I hear the word buttload?
I think I think we're gonna have to, you know, en- engrave that that phrase somewhere and attribute it to the right sport. Ben's got a spot for it back there. All right. Next, golf professional. I know we had the discussion on this. The clarification on this that we are removing one part time person and upgrading that position to one full time.
Correct.
And I know Chris is Chris isn't on, but Kyle, you had additional information, I think it was the last meeting on what that would go to and that Chris is confident that we would see that return.
Yes, yep, just a, that's a, I think a good enough summary of, and and I can expand if if you'd like. We touched on that at the last meeting as well.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'm not having a challenge with the seventy four thousand there. For all I know, it could be a push. Bringing that individual on, he may generate enough revenue to to take care of his own salary, which I think is great. I think what we have to keep in mind is that there is a limit to how many rounds of golf you can have on that golf course. That's a number that has been discussed here in years that you can only do so much and it will never ever hit on a hundred percent. So I know when we looked at spending the six point one million dollars to do that the first time, we did get into those numbers. We looked at if we were able to get seventy, seventy five percent usage. So I would encourage the future council to start looking at those percentages because that is the cap that you're going to be dealing with in the future.
Good point. Anybody else on Mayor Protem?
I'll just say one thing real quick. It may eventually make us money. It is not a priority.
Anybody else? Councilmember Spencer?
I just wanted to get a clarification. So seventy four up, thirty two down. Is that a net difference of the forty or whatever or otherwise?
Yeah, so this is purely on the expense side.
Okay.
And so this doesn't contemplate any additional revenue generated from that person.
Okay, and and we talked about that the the pro in in giving lessons and things like that, they take the lion's share of those fees. Is that right?
Yeah, so specifically for lessons, yes. What lessons lead to is an increase in merchandise, increase in driving range revenue, increase in in rounds played. And so you have these ancillary benefits that are realized from from that increase in activity.
Uh, Councilmember Kennedy? I'm making everybody Mayor Protem and I like slip.
Freudian slip there. I I I think it's important to jump back into a discussion a couple of years ago when we started looking at paying a commission to our golf pro. Because the question came up that if he's giving lessons, which he is, making additional revenue, then who's running the store when he's out giving lessons? So the question could be also if this gentleman was coming in at seventy four thousand, is he there to pick up the slack when the golf pro is out giving lessons?
It is all of the above. So it's other other ones are, so this person would be in the store if other people are giving lessons and then he would be, the capacity for all of the services delivered would increase with the addition of this person.
Yeah, and I know I talk to Ty quite often and he's quite often working seven, eight, nine days in a row and, you know, they're, well, this this time of year dawn to dusk is not that much. But in the summer and the busy season, he's, it's like he lives there. So I think this will, this will take some of the slack off some of the other employees as well. Okay, anybody else on Proshop? Okay, accounting system, we kind of beat that horse, I think. Any other comments on that? All right, maintenance workers, park one for parks, one for streets. Any questions for for Ben or for Jen on those?
I will note that the thirty two K is probably a little high because the Resource X software only lets me make half of a maintenance worker. So this that basically represents six months for each, which our seasonal staff typically don't work the entire six months. They also don't have the same burdened rate either because we're not paid. So that thirty two K is probably, it's probably more like twenty K per person. And this is really based on, you know, a lot of complaints that we got in the spring and summer when it comes to weeding and things like that. So this would basically help help us do a better job taking care of the city and not have to hire contractors a lot of work.
Right. Councilmember Ball, so what months do they work?
I'd probably be May to October. It depends on the maintenance workers. Sometimes we get students that are only available for their summer. So this would allow us to get a little bit more of that done in house. And we did have to do quite a bit of contracting this summer to fix some of the areas that we got some complaints on and like the medians and things and in the parks.
Yeah, and some of it because of that waited till kind of late in the season.
And also, we had we had basically our city arborist who were paying to be a city arborist doing a lot of basically unskilled labor, which, so he he couldn't concentrate on some of the other things he should be doing.
Where should?
Hold on, go ahead, Linda, then we'll go back to.
Ben, how many part time employees do we have?
Right now I have zero. So this would be the, just the two seasonal for for public works. And we were supporting parks with one of them and more like roadside street. That's why I think why the streetscape one is a different shade of purple because of the basically the program it's supporting. It's a little.
It wasn't that many years ago, six or seven, that we had a lot of part time. And a lot of those part time had become full time. So that did increase that.
And that was one of the reasons we wanted to go seasonal first. A lot of our, but both those divisions, our new supervisors, they're finding things that that maybe we didn't see before. We were planning to try it out. And if it was something that we could maintain and have enough work for them, one day it may become a full time employee, but we didn't want to put that much in until we had a chance to take a look at it for a few years.
Thank you.
Like the try it before you buy it.
Exactly.
Linda, did you? I'm sorry, you have another question?
Um, God, I forgot.
Okay. All right, anybody else on the seasonal maintenance worker items? All right, then the last one is the placer AI subscription. We've talked about this in previous meetings. Is there any further discussion?
All right, Evan, move to the next slide on this, please.
There's more.
You'll see these are all under, I said, less than seventeen, less than eighteen thousand.
So, real quick, Ben, from Mike's questions, Ben on, what what's the difference between this top light item and the other two?
Well, so the first two, those were new positions, seasonal employees. This is basically transitioning to current full time positions into a higher level.
Got it. Thank you.
What what's SR?
Senior.
Senior. So this is creating a tiered structure within the street maintenance program so that when you go back and think about that deepest red category, it was minus fifty six percent is associated with street maintenance workers. So this is part of the strategy to help alleviate that disparity.
And I know there was a question about post falls in quarter lane. I just wanted, I know we don't have a lot of empirical evidence, but anecdotally, I've lost two folks to them and they have made more money going to those two locations doing a similar position.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else on that top line item? If not, we'll go to ad contract lobbyist.
I I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So so Ben, these guys on the top first line, these are the ones, they work under Steven Riker, correct? Okay, okay, so they're actual.
So that would basically be opportunity for promotion for basically half of his staff. But we were, this is not a new position. So what you're seeing there is basically a nine thousand dollar annual increase based on a higher per hour wage.
For each.
Because they would move into a new position title.
So they'd be moving up.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Kennedy?
Of course, I'm on the lobbyists.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So move ahead, move ahead. Passable. Lobby is fifteen thousand. That's a small amount. I assume that's just to basically keep somebody on somewhat of a retainer.
So this is a professional service where you, the city would hire a contracted lobbyist to work on our behalf in Olympia. And and there are two or three primary firms that do this. So a lot of cities team up. And so you have lobbyists that are speaking on behalf of multiple cities.
Right.
And you can drive costs down as a result.
Yeah, there's a sub that I'm absolutely in favor of. The dollar amount there, accumulated with the others is very advantageous. If it, if we did not have a lobbyist working for us when we were trying to get the overpass done, we would not have gotten that six over six million dollars. They did us an outstanding job.
Twenty.
With that.
Twenty million.
Twenty million, yeah. Well, I'm always.
Better.
Yeah.
You need better.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, it was it was a real benefit to it.
I think that was the best eight thousand dollars the city spent. So we went in with the fire department, the school district. We all we all split it. That was the best bang for our buck we ever could have gotten. Go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz.
Are there any particular things that we are looking at lobbying for this year?
So the contemplation for this initial year is to ensure, so so this would be put in place this year with an eye toward starting it in twenty twenty seven. And so whatever our legislative priorities become in twenty twenty seven, but this is mostly, I think, associated and and the future council may have a different direction, and that's okay, is securing grant money.
Yeah, there's not, we can do budget wise this year because it's a halfway through.
Right.
Yep. Councilmember Ball?
When you say grant money, you mean like to expand I ninety or or I mean, what are you talking about?
I mean, it could be that, but but any state funded project, and we have a couple that are on our CFP right now, so expanding the capacity to do that kind of work, leveraging other people's money to make our dollars go farther.
Anybody else? All right, next is our asset management software for stormwater maintenance. Add on to all the asset management software we've been accumulating and helping us plan for the future.
Yep. So this was part of the pavement master plan that we, what I talked to you about, I think it was, I think it was back in February. And so as part of that scan, we also have a software suite that comes with it that allows us to do pavement master plan as well as maintenance tracking for stormwater and roadway infrastructure. So this represents basically the stormwater funds portion of pay for that annual software.
Is that in here?
It might be somewhere in the stormwater fund, but I can't, I couldn't tell you exactly where.
No, on the list on.
The actual software itself costs twenty thousand dollars a year, which is 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 quite expensive, but it's it was one of the few that we could actually find as part of the part of the pavement master plan. So eight thousand of that will come out of roadway professional services. We can absorb that into our existing budget, so I didn't add an increase. The stormwater portion of it is an increase, so I put it in there.
Yeah.
So that wasn't on the first page of our handout?
Right, it's it's on the public, it's in the public works list listed under city logics. So it's something we already have. We're just shifting some of the expenditure over to stormwater. Yeah.
So we paid for it this year with the pavement master plan funding. And then twenty twenty six, it'll shift to a couple of different sources to pay for it.
So where did you say it is?
In the public works list, which is in on the third page of this handout. It is called city logics. So the total cost is nineteen five. We're proposing with this item to shift twelve thousand of that cost to the stormwater fund is what you're seeing here.
Any other questions on that one? All right, and we've got replaced benches at ball fields. We're getting into way way little numbers. I know this is way overdue. Woodwinds are falling apart and getting dangerous.
Well, they're not dangerous yet.
Well, yes, I get it, get it.
They're they're wooden and they are in dire need of of being replaced and we're proposing aluminum benches.
Yep.
At Pavilion.
Anybody questions? Figure so. All right. And then while you're up there, recreation programming?
Yeah, so that's in house programming. Now that we have Mikel on board, he's he's knocked out some time here to plan for next year. And he's got some ideas for programming within our own staffing and that will allow him to pay for supplies and and things to.
But we'll have revenue offsetting some of it at least.
Yeah.
Because the additional people signing up.
Yep.
Okay. All right, computer equipments, equipment for libraries. Do we want to get into the five thousand dollar line items or are we done with the list? I don't think. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Jenny.
So earlier we were talking about salaries and attrition, and we have not had any attrition at the library, but I thought it would be, I just wanted to make you guys aware, I started looking for a children's librarian in May. I made three offers, took me till October, and my first two offers were refused. And both candidates did indicate that they didn't find the salary attractive enough. So we are seeing struggles with hiring in the library.
Thank you. Okay.
What's the reduction? Reduced professional services parks?
We're bringing things in house, right, Jen? The reduction in the professional services, bringing things in house.
The last dark purple one, yeah.
Yeah, so Kyle, you might have to help me on this one. This one was just matching up to prior years, the history and prior years. Last year was high for some reason. And without looking at spring broke detail, I don't remember what made it high. Remember I sent you an email and asked?
Yeah, this was just an evaluation of actuals.
Yeah.
And so what we're noticing, and so when Jen was developing her her parks budget, she's noticing, okay. Where are we not using? And so let's reduce.
The trend over the past five years.
And so, so there was a reduction in the budget because what we're seeing in the previous year actuals wasn't meeting what we thought we were going to spend in a given year.
So the net increases that you see constitute the entire budget, right? So you have a net increase of six hundred and essentially eighty five thousand. That does not include the three percent that we've talked about. That does not include CFP items, and that does not include the increases that were programmed associated with the police collective bargaining agreement. It covers everything else. So a net increase proposed of six hundred and eighty five thousand.
And then we've already brought that down by about one sixty.
Right, and we've had some adjustments to that.
Yep. Mayor Protem?
Well, I don't want to be the Debbie Downer here of the group, but I will be, just for the sake of argument. Before we pat ourselves on the back too much, I think it's worth noting that we started the night with a nineteen point nine million dollar general fund budget. We're finishing with a nineteen point seven. Point seven seven, it looks like roughly general fund budget. So we, out of a conversation that lasted about an hour and a half, we were able to cut point seven five percent from the budget. That's all I have a second.
Right. Uh, Councilmember Kennedy?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I don't perceive that as a Debbie Downer. That's just reality. And for council members, our responsibility is to the citizens. It's important that we realize or consider those numbers. My question under the decrease of two hundred and ninety nine thousand, could you bring back up to show what the accumulation is, what are some of the larger numbers for that?
Sure, the by far the biggest, and Evan, if you can back up one side, is the offsetting restructuring IT services. We're not spending more or saving more. We're just restructuring how we're delivering that.
So the two fifty, go back to the last page then. So there really is the difference in the two fifty to two ninety nine.
Yes, we've got the offsetting elimination of some expenditure with the golf pro and then you see the twenty three thousand and four thousand there.
All right. So we're done with done with this list. Is there anything else from the council? Any proposed changes or further discussion? Not then. I think we make the adjustments and we'll see the second read come forward. Councilmember Kennedy?
I have, I have, of course, if, I don't want to move away from the budget totally because I have some. I, I have questions. If, I don't want to move away from the budget totally because I have some questions that are related to other items.
Sure.
But it is in the budget, so at some point I won't be able to address that.
Then let's go.
Ready?
Have at it.
Very good.
Just let us know what page you're on.
I have five, and I think we took care of a couple of them. Uh, go into the mayor's, uh, report to the city, the second page.
Oh, I gotta get back there.
And these are just some small items, but I think they're important items.
It tells a page number.
What page? There is no page number on.
It's the second page under the first tab.
Oh.
City council members of Liberty Lake residents, one of the mayor of the city. Second page in. I want to draw attention down about halfway through the page. When it comes to, I'll read this, because of the strong financial footing, I'm recommending a zero percent property tax increase for the fifth year in a row. In fact, Liberty property tax rate is expected to drop down such and such, such and such on it. Now, two thousand twenty-five property taxes cover one hundred percent of library operations. Then funds twenty-seven point five percent of police department operations. I'm concerned with that. And I know it's just a technical thing, but I think it's important. What I'm going back to is years ago, prior to us changing, there was a percentage which was allowed in the budget to fund the library. We decided to change that just a few years ago and treat them as same as any other department. But the priority has always been public safety. What I'm concerned is that the image is that what's more important than public safety is the library. On that they're a hundred percent funded to property tax. And what's left over, which is twenty-seven point five, goes to police department operating costs. I'm proposing that that has to be changed. It needs to be changed the way it was before, in my opinion, is that the priority is public safety. And the property tax that we get was always designed to pay for public safety first and then library. What I find interesting is that how over the last some years, that what creps up in priority. And what I'm reading here is that something the citizen pointed out to me. They said, Mike, when did it change? The public safety is no longer number one, that it was library. Had to think about that one. I propose that that needs to be changed. So we give the citizens that we are more important, that we give our focus for those taxes go to public safety and the remainder goes to the library.
Well, you know, by ordinance, and this is why the calculation comes up comes out like this is because by ordinance, you know, when we started twenty, almost twenty-five years ago now, there was what, fifty cents per, fifty cents out of the total went to the library and they, the library got their budget set based on what that amount was. And that still hasn't changed. We just, we updated the ordinance to percentage and not the fifty cents. I forgot what was.
It's twenty-three point eight percent.
Thank you, twenty-three point eight percent. And that's what sets the lives for a budget. That's the only reason the calculation comes out that way because library sets their budget based on that percentage out of the property taxes.
But we changed it, this council changed it to show that we would treat the library like any other department.
Yeah, so we removed the twenty-three point eight percent provision. Um, and so, um, are, we, we collect, um, so we levy about three point one six million dollars from property tax. About five hundred thousand of that goes to our Tiffin lift fund. Um, in this budget, it's contemplated that, uh, eight hundred and fifty thousand is going to be um, to library and then the rest of that goes towards public safety. So our public safety budget for twenty twenty-six is seven point two million. And so we, obviously we cannot fund a hundred percent of that with property tax. And so, um, uh, lion's share of the sales and use taxes, obviously geared towards, um, all of those. These are all unrestricted revenues as well. And so, um, so we're just, we're, we're matching up total revenue with total expenses. Um, but, yeah, in what, what has been contemplated is that twenty-three point eight percent is one hundred percent of the library. And so.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a policy statement what I put here. It, that's what's set by the council through the rest of the budget. It's all general fund money.
The point is that why this council changed it is because what we were allowing the percentage for the, the library was not funding the library. It was not sufficient. We were upside down.
So we, one of the, so one of the, one of the, um, pain points of a zero percent property tax increase zero over a year is that we have services and we have salaries for the library that do continue to increase. And so that's impacting their ability to increase their services if they're matching a zero percent property tax year over year.
Do you get my point? Citizens, the point is public safety is number one. Public safety, that has to be funded, has to be funded one hundred percent. Everything else has to adjust down to it. It's a tactical thing, but it's a very big tactical thing because I believe that this has come to the root of what's happened in the city over a period of just recent years, that the priority level is things that never should have become a priority though. It just blows my mind.
I think the council's been very clear that public safety priority is number one over the almost seventeen years I've been sitting here.
I appreciate that. Well, let's put it in writing then.
So that. You have through the budget.
Yeah, that's one. Well, this is part of the budget. This has to do with the budget.
You approve the budget every year, the count, you as in the council approve the budget every year. And by doing that, you set the priorities. It has nothing to do with my budget message. You are not approving my message. You're approving the budget.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm a council member that has the right to express my concerns when it comes to the budget. You may not agree with it. You may think that I'm over the top on it, but still that's the opinion. Moving on from that one. Goes on to second item, which is on page twenty-two. Boards and commissions. Over the years, always found interesting is that when I first started getting involved in the city, that all committees were advisory to the council. Suddenly it's evolved into that most of the committees are still advisory to the council, but the library is not. And although we did have an ordinance passed one nineteen E that specifies the council has to approve any changes and stuff there. It does not say under Liberty Lake Library Board of Trustees that they are advisory to the council. Yet when it comes under Planning Commission and other committees, it is mentioned that they are advisory. I would like to see as a citizen first and an elected official second that that is what it has said. They are advisory. What I find it interesting is that when we have individuals who are appointed to that committee that are confused that they're not advisory.
I, I did mention, I did notice that as I was going through this and this, this description does need to be updated to meet our ordinance. So if we can, we can incorporate that, that'd be great.
No big problem. Just want to point.
Yeah, no, I, I noticed that as well. Thanks for bringing it up.
No, not a problem, not a problem. Thank you for saying that, Mayor. Oh, the other item, we did take care of that. That had to do with the drone. We did get to cover some of those. Another one that I had question. Pass on enterprise fund. And the others were covered. Thank you.
So, all right, anybody else? Mayor Parton.
So I, I want to go back to, um, back to what the work that we did here tonight. And I guess I just have a, a question for everyone that's here. And that is that, are we really saying, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. Are we really saying the only thing we can cut out of a nineteen point nine million dollar budget is a drone show?
That's why we're here. If anybody has any other suggestions, that's why we're here tonight.
Okay. Thank you. I think that will be very surprising to a lot of people.
Uh, Councilmember Spencer.
Uh, I, I guess.
Sorry, who was first? I don't know who came in first.
Mayor, thank you.
Who, who was first? Do you know? Go ahead, Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you for saying that. Allow me to speak. We just, just cut the drone. I happen to be the one to bring up the drone. If other council members have ideas to cut, then say something. Tell me what it is, so I can think about it. Don't bring it up and expect me to sit here and go, hmm, what could that be? Let me know. Because then we can make a motion, we can second it, and we can discuss it so we can move on.
Councilmember Spencer.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I guess I'd echo that. If, if there's something you want to cut, then propose it and let's talk about it. Uh, can we talk about, um, capital facilities plan?
Yeah, Lisa's here.
Okay. Um, so I am looking at, it looks like page one thirty-one or page ten of the capital facilities plan.
Hang on, which one? Well, there, there's two page numbers on.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So there's an overall page number and then I think, uh.
One thirty-one?
One thirty-one. Yeah, we're looking at PFs.
Okay.
PFs. Um, so, uh, we talked about this, uh, I think when we went over the capital facilities plan originally, PF fourteen down towards the bottom. Um, I would like to make a motion to move this item uh, for the citing master plan for new community pool, um, to the unfunded. Or is that the proper term? The unfunded projects list?
Potential, potential.
Potential, yeah. I'd like to move that to that, uh, to that document and off the.
We have a second.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Kennedy, discussion. Councilmember Kurtz.
I'll vote opposed to it. I think the only reason, one of the main reasons we have it on there is to be able to apply for and capture grants. Um, and I think that this was also, if I remember right, the number one, um, requested item from the community satisfaction survey, if I remember correctly.
So it, it was mentioned heavily in the community satisfaction survey. You're thinking of a survey that we did specifically about capital improvements. Uh, and, and that's where it was by far the highest, uh, preferred item to move from the what are we calling it?
Potential.
I should know because I said, because I had, I'm the one who had a problem with the unfunded project.
Potential future projects.
Future, future projects list to the CFP.
So I, I think with, uh, listening to what the community has said in mind, um, and that we aren't committing any funds to it. Um, and that's a, that would be in next year's budget, not this year's budget, I would vote opposed to the motion.
Anybody else? Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify that moving it to that, uh, unfunded or potential future projects list, whatever. I might get it by the end of the night. Uh, doesn't preclude us from getting a grant. Is that correct?
That's why we have that list.
Okay, so, so having it on the current list where it's at, uh, isn't, isn't important for the grant funding. So just wanted to.
Uh, Councilmember Kennedy.
Uh, I, I, I would prefer to wait until everybody else has an opportunity to speak.
Okay, anybody else? It's your turn.
Oh, very good. Page one thirty-four.
Oh, oh, hold on, we have got a motion on the floor. I thought you were going to speak on this. We have a motion on the floor in a second.
This had, to me, this had to do with the discussion of the motion.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. So you, I, you're, I thought you were jumping in different, since you had a different page, it was a different thing. My apologies.
No, that's quite all right.
One seventy-four?
One thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Could you, could you tell me what the capital facilities number is? Thank you.
Okay, so the description, the description of PF fourteen.
Yeah, it's, it's once it get on the poll.
Perfect.
So it's PF thirteen?
Fourteen. Oh, go ahead.
PF fourteen. Uh, I remember this one very clear. I remember in the meeting, Councilman Kurtz brought this up and I voted in favor of it because the idea was if we put it on there, then we could apply for funding. And I supported that. I still think that was a pretty good idea at the time. I since changed my mind because having to do with how we had to deal with the state and applying for a grant with the library. And the other thing was what concerns me is that the pool, we, we had individuals come forward and say, yeah, that's a big priority. Well, there's a lot of priorities, but it doesn't mean that that priority is something we can afford to do. Now, the city has given the citizens twice a pool. And the majority have said no the first time. The second time they said hell no because they voted it down even more. When this was brought in before, I had changed my opinion because my concern was that suddenly this thing, once again, has raised its head further than I've ever seen before. And I would like to read PF fourteen. Citing master planning for the new community pool. Funds for the citing and master planning for a new community pool slated for two thousand twenty-seven. Pending outcome of park and recreational master plan, PF nineteen, with funding, with funding for construction to be determined based on outcome of master planning. I've had citizens who I've read that to and they go, we're getting a pool. Tell me how you can read that and not get the impression that we're getting a pool, that it's already a done deal. Because we've had citizens come forward saying, we're going to get a pool.
Happy to clarify that, but we have a parks master plan going on right now. And with it, they will be bringing forward, uh, capital facilities projects associated with that. We're going through the process right now. We don't know what the recommendations are going to be. We don't know what the, what the community is going to say and we don't know. We don't, that will get fed into our twenty-year capital facility plan. The fact that it's.
Lisa, hold on a sec. I think the question's in the wording. Am I gonna, getting ready to follow you there, Councilmember Kennedy?
I'm in favor that it's taken out and put in the unfunded.
No, what I was looking at, I thought this is where you were going. The way it's worded, I can see confusion if you read this. It says funds for the citing and master planning for a new community pool slated for twenty twenty-seven. It looks like the new community pool is slated for twenty twenty-seven, not just the citing.
Correct.
So I think if you reword it, that might help.
But here's also, I think we're lends the confusion of this, where individuals still think that the council is moving ahead with approval of a pool. I had mentioned a previous, previous meeting about this particular item, that we have never had any public input on this. We've had no committees organized whatsoever and suddenly it was there. And I understand the benefit is so we can apply for any grants. I understand that. The challenge is that people get the impression is that, well, we have to have the grant to be able to get the pool. The same confusion happened with the library. Because people got upset because we didn't get the grant because we changed where we were going, not build the library there. Reality was this, getting that grant for the library or not had nothing to do with us building a new library. I wish to hell that you could, people comprehend that. It has nothing to do with it. If we would have got the grant, we could have used it to move forward. If we didn't get the grant, it didn't mean that we were going to stop moving ahead on the library. The same thing here. I feel that we're given the impression that's important. We filed for the grant because if we get the grant, then that's a go ahead and green light to move ahead on a pool. My concern is it will never, ever go to the citizens. It's gone there twice. I believe the future council will not allow the citizens to get involved with that. And just like we never, three of the council members voted not to let the citizens.
Point of order.
Go right ahead.
Let's talk about the citing of the master plan, not about potential people's voting later in life. We're talking about the citing of the master plan.
Well, there's a lot of what you're referring to. Has to do with everything throughout.
I, I need to rule on the point of order. Let's keep the, the conversation germane to, to this topic, not about potential votes or sending it to the public. The question on the table is whether to remove the hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the twenty twenty-seven. Uh, public, that, capital facilities plan PF fourteen, if we're going to remove that and put it on the potential projects list or if we're going to leave it in.
I agree. Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz. That's number done.
Uh, I speak in opposition to the motion. I think that the fact that our citizen response has been asking for this to remove it is to intentionally defy their intentions. So uh, further, I support the master plan that's going on for the parks and I look forward to the input that the community is going to provide for that. I look forward to making real change when that becomes available.
All right, anybody else? Councilmember Ball?
So my concern about a pool, first of all, where, where would it go? Do we know this?
That, that's what this.
I understand, but what, let me finish. What I want to, I, I, I could not support putting a pool in town square at all. I don't think that's the right place for it. Um, so, um, that and, um, recently, I think Cheney put in a pool, um, and they're already having trouble.
Um, and they're already having trouble with it, with maintenance and cracks in it already. I, I, in my opinion, from what I know, and it's not a lot about pools, they are an absolute money suck. Um, in keeping them up to speed and, you know, um, yeah, so I, I just have real, um, qualms about pools in general, so I would like, I would support putting it on the later down to be funded, or, yeah.
Yeah. Potential future projects.
Thank you. Yeah.
Are there any other comments? And I'll go, I'll take a voice vote just so we have it.
Mayor, yeah, uh, just to address some things that have been said, um, it's one thing to send out a survey and ask, we've talked about this before, you want a pony? Um, it's another thing to put it before a vote, before the voters, and the voters have voted on the pool before. Yes, it was tied to a library and whatnot. Um, but I, I don't think when the rubber meets the road, if we have to go back to citizens and say, we're moving forward with a pool and we came up with the plan and we start moving forward with this, uh, that now we've got to cut wages. Okay, we've, we've talked about this in the past. We have to be, um, uh, we have to be intentional about what things we are increasing to our budget and to, uh, Councilmember Ball's point, um, I don't think it's a wise financial decision, uh, let alone the fact that I don't believe that, uh, municipality should be involved in creating pools. If there's a private, uh, entity that wants to come in and put a pool, uh, for profit that will benefit the community, then they will do that research and they will bring it to the community. I don't believe that's a primary function of government. So I'll just reiterate, um, even if we did go down that route at some point, moving it to the potential future projects list does not preclude us from getting a grant, period.
I call for the question.
All in favor of calling question?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to go ahead and take, go ahead and go for a vote. I'll do, again, I'll do.
Can I also ask for a, a roll call vote?
Yeah, that's what I was going to do.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, you were voting on calling a question. Okay.
Yeah, I was voting on calling the question. So we will go to a vote. All right, so those in favor of moving the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for PF fourteen from the capital facilities plan to the potential future projects list, close enough. I will, we'll go ahead. Um, that's, that's the question on the table. Councilmember Kurtz.
Nay.
Councilmember Ball?
Aye.
Councilman, uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Spencer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunn?
Nay.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, in this case, it's a tie and I can't. Oh, four-two, oh, yeah, hold on, wait, who did I miss? I didn't write, I didn't write somebody down. Oh, yeah, I, I, I just.
It was four-two.
Thank you. I just forgot to write one, one, I forgot to put right.
Did you hear it was four-two?
Yeah, I did, yeah, yeah, I, I forgot to write Mike's name down. What's, I'm like, what's going on? Okay, yeah, so motion passes. We will be moving PF fourteen to the potential future projects list. It's eight thirteen, okay, Mayor Pro Tim.
Uh, one more quick, um, comment here and a motion actually on the, uh, general fund budget. I'm going to make a motion, uh, to, uh, direct city staff to cut two percent across the board, uh, from the entire budget and have them bring back, back the budget with a two percent cut, including what we all already voted on tonight. And if there's a second, I can explain more.
I'll second for, for.
No, wait a minute, what, is there a page or you just?
No, this is in general.
Yep. So, um, this is just the general fund budget, as we mentioned, or as I mentioned earlier, the cut that we made tonight brought it down to about nineteen point seven-six-ish. Um, I am, uh, making this motion to direct city staff to come back with a two percent cut, uh, and leading it up to city staff to determine where that would come from, uh, because they're the ones who know best, uh, in, in that, um, in that circumstance. Uh, just to give everyone an idea of what we're talking about here, we're talking about two pennies out of every dollar we spend, two pennies. Uh, that would take the budget to nineteen point four-ish. And it would still account, uh, for a twelve point five percent increase in the budget, um, year over year, and a forty-six percent increase in the budget over the past two cycles. As I mentioned earlier, I am concerned that we are, uh, spending a little bit more than we should be spending. I do not believe heading into the next economic, um, situation that we may find ourselves in the next year, that it is prudent to continue to increase, uh, the budget at this amount, so that is why I'm making this motion. And if I did my math correctly, uh, then two percent would, uh, amount to three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, roughly, yep.
So you're asking for two percent over and above the hundred and sixty, those?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so I, I'll get to, I, let me flip my book back. Um, all right, so who had their hand up first? Councilmember Ball and Councilmember Kurtz?
So just to be clear, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, so you just want them to kind of decide where to?
Correct. I think it would be best for them to c- uh, come back to us and say, okay, here's where we've determined we should cut the two percent from.
Um, Councilmember Kurtz.
There's five hundred thousand dollars we can keep in the budget if we don't pay down Trailhead early.
Right, who else? Uh, who was first?
He was.
Councilmember Kurtz, answer.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm comfortable with this, and as I said, uh, in the last meeting, I'd rather city staff do this, uh, and, and take a hard look at, at, uh, this reduction on the increase, um, rather than us arbitrarily, I mean, I think it was pretty easy to say, he- here's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar drone show. It's pretty easy for us to identify whether that's critical to the function of our government here in Liberty Lake. Um, but with some of these other things, um, I, I, I think it's appropriate to leave it up to staff to, um, and, and Mark leading the way, kind of trying to go over those numbers and determine, uh, you know, if we need to make a reduction here on the increase that we're proposing, um, where is that going to be most effective? Because we could go slicing, uh, here and there, but that, that may leave folks hamstring, hamstrung.
Um, Councilmember Kennedy and I think we got Councilmember Dunn.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I do support that, and I would have to go back to the second page in the mayor's report in here. That, why convinces me that I support that? Because of the mayor's wisdom and staff, they put this in writing, and I highlighted this because I felt it was so important that I highlighted for my benefits, those challenges ahead, rising operational costs. While revenues remain strong, operating expenses are increasing at a faster rate. Some of these costs driven are within our control. But then it said, but many are not. So I appreciate the mayor and staff putting that in there. It shows some wisdom if you're, you're looking at this. And I would support staff coming back with what would two percent, my friend.
Councilmember Dunn, any comments?
Um, I think it is, uh, specifically disrespectful for council members to ask the, uh, staff to make decisions regarding judgment and the values of the city. It is specifically the responsibility of this council to look over what has been provided as a budget and make decisions about it, based on that, specifically values. Um, the city staff do not express the values. They're not elected to do so. It's the elected members of this council that, that's their responsibility. Uh, I think it's a cop-out and it reflects an inability to really, um, I don't know, be brave enough to, to pick specific items from a budget to select them to be removed. I do not support the motion.
All right, any other comments before we move to, go ahead, Councilmember Ball?
Yeah, I, I, I thought that was our job to do the budget, not to throw it back at the staff. Maybe they've got enough to do. So, you know, if we're of a mind to keep chipping away at it, then that's our job, not, not throw it back on them. It's not fair.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I take seriously what both our council members have just said, that it is our responsibility. But who gave us this? Where did this come from? Didn't come from any of the council members. Came from the mayor and the staff. We have the expertise and we have to rely on them to be part of the decision-making factor. It's like my concern earlier, saying that all of our committees are advisory to the council. I look at the mayor and the staff as being advisory to the council, including myself, to be able to come forward on what their recommendations are, because they've been at this from months on in. I only got this here sixty days ago, less than that. So I have to rely on the expertise that they bring. I think it's completely natural for me, so I can make a logical decision to say, you know what, I'm going to go to the pros. I'm going to go to the pros and you guys come up with some numbers that maybe I didn't catch, because you may come up with something, as you did tonight, such in salary, that I look at and I go individually, there's no way in hell I'm voting for that, because of salary. So this is a collaborative effort here, and that's between elected officials and the staff. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtz, then Mayor Pro Tim.
So I just heard that we rely on the staff in an advisory opinion, and I agree with that. And the advice that they've given them is that this is a well-rounded. What did you say, Mark? You had a, you had a phrase that you used.
I use the term viable.
A viable, a viable budget for the city. And so I do rely on our city staff. I rely on the fact that they have taken months to do this, and they have thought carefully about what, um, what they should recommend and what they should not recommend. In the almost six years that I've been here, I don't know that I've ever, um, found a city staff member, um, or city administrator to, um, be not a good steward of the taxpayers' dollars, or not be somebody who was, um, trying to advance the goals of the city and the goals of this council. And I think that with the amount of time that they've spent, this should have been, this question in my mind should have been one of the first questions we had at our first budget meeting. If there was a real desire to really cut the budget significantly, this would have been one of those questions, um, that we talked about back in the beginning of November.
That's it. Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
I, cut the budget significantly? We're talking about two percent. That's not a significant cut. We're talking about three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And it's not even a cut to the budget. It's a reduction in the future increase. The, you know, I think we're getting a real good flavor here of what happens when the discussion of budgets comes up in our personal lives and in our workplace settings. If it ever comes up. I know it comes up for me, comes up for me every year about this time. And I, as I mentioned in the last meeting, I take a budget to my board and the board requests changes every year. They don't request just one change and then sign off on everything. We are not a rubber stamp. That is my opinion. Maybe other people believe we are a rubber stamp and we should just continue to do, you know, whatever staff recommends. I, I have no doubt that Mark and Kyle and the rest of the staff put together a terrific budget based on what they thought would be the best way forward for the city. That is not the discussion here tonight. The discussion here tonight is whether we can afford that going forward. And not only next year, but the year after that, and the year after that, and the year after that. That's what the discussion is. It is not a denigration of our staff. It is not to say that we don't trust the staff. I do trust the staff, which is part of the reason why two meetings ago, I asked the staff to bring us back. If you had to cut some stuff from the budget, what would you like to cut? Now, if we would prefer, I'll go ahead and start slicing and dicing and making all sorts of motions and getting rid of this and getting rid of that, and we can do that. We can do that all night long. We can do that at the next meeting too. And we can just vote on all these motions to whack, uh, numbers here and parts of the budget there. But instead, I thought, let's do a flat amount, have Mark and Kyle and others take it back to the room and see if there's areas, if we might like a budget, if we might be okay with a budget that cuts two pennies out of every dollar that we spend. Two pennies. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything? Anybody else before we go to a vote? All right, I'll do a voice vote on this one as well. Those in favor of having the staff go back and, um, cut two percent total additional out of the budget, um, your vote will be aye, so go ahead, um, Councilmember Kurtz?
Nay.
Councilmember Ball?
No.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Spencer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunn?
Nay.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
All right, vote, tie vote in this situation fails. Correct, correction?
Uh, yeah, you could vote with this, because it's just a direction to staff. So it's not about paying any money or other items under that, so theoretically you could vote, but even if you didn't vote, it would not pass.
Right, so because there, it's a tie vote, it doesn't pass.
No, you, you could, you could break a tie on this, Mayor.
Must I or should I? I mean, you, I mean, it's, it sounds like you're saying I, I need to.
Yes, you have the ability to break the tie in this situation on a vote that's on the table.
Okay, and my vote would be nay, so motion fails. All right, Mayor Pro Tim?
Just going to make one more comment as we wrap up. So I asked the question earlier, are we really sitting here tonight and saying that the only thing that we can cut out of the budget is a drone show? The response I got was silence, and I think we just heard the answer to that response, or to that question.
Councilmember Kurtz?
What do you want to cut?
I think it would be best to let city staff determine what would be the best, what is the top priority. We saw a list of four items there that had low priority, and we skipped right on past them. So if you'd like, I can bring back a bunch of amendments at the next meeting, uh, to start slicing and dicing, but I didn't think we'd want to do it that way, so.
Well, I think that if there are ideas, instead of, because I had, do have questions procedurally about what happens next. Um, because clearly we're not done with the budget discussion, so I would imagine that there are items that have piqued your interest in the budget. What do you want to cut? Let's talk about it. We're still here. We have till nine.
Let's slice and dice. All right, let's, fine, start, and we can start making the amendments. Can you bring it up on the screen, please?
What?
The, the, the list of the two pages that we were going over?
Those the only things we can work from, though?
Because we already worked.
Those are some of the things we can work from. We'll start there.
But we already did that.
So you're changing your mind? No, I'm not changing my mind. We had to pass through those actions and you had. Did we officially, did we officially make motion on those, that we were going to keep them?
Councilmembers, please stop. Councilmember Dunn, finish your point, please.
I'll allow.
Councilmember Cargill?
All right, I'll make a motion that we cut, uh, the one hundred twenty-seven thousand of the, the public art project budget.
We have a second? Not hearing any, motion fails.
I'll make a motion that we cut the, uh, a golf professional at Trailhead.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? No, Councilmember Spencer?
Yeah, I mean, uh, this, this one, uh, is not aligned with, with, uh, with the, the city's values, so, uh, as far as, as far as that goes, um, I mean, that's only going to save us forty-some, you know, net, right? Because it, it would revert back to the part-time individual.
That's correct.
So it would.
Okay, any other, Councilmember Kurtz?
Mm, my only thought with that is that the, um, it's intended to be revenue generation and potentially offsetting that cost. Um, so I know it doesn't seem aligned, um. It's a potential revenue generator for Trailhead to be able to pay for itself, which I think is one of the goals that the council's established.
Any other comments? All right, not hearing any. We'll go, I'm, I'm going to stick, oh, go ahead, Matt.
I guess I have a question, is that I'm struggling with how would that employee increase substantial revenue for Trailhead?
We'll go back to Kyle, he has that.
Because our source of revenue comes from golf rounds and also people hitting golf balls. That individual is also giving lessons and we're, we're receiving some income off of that, and that person is generating some income.
We'll let Kyle answer that, because he's the one who had the discussion.
Yeah, so, so the, the service level, the capacity increases across the board. It's not just lessons. Um, it's driving range revenue, um, it's introducing new, um, call them customers to the Trailhead facility, and so then that does increase round generation. That increases potentially simulator use, that increases merchandising, uh, at the pro shop, and all of those things add up to what we hope would be not just an offset, but a, but a revenue generator.
Any other comments on this, on this motion? Right, not hearing any. I'm going to stick with the voice votes. Uh, Councilmember Kurtz?
Nay.
Councilmember Ball?
Repeat the motion, please.
Repeat the motion, please.
To remove, remove the, to, to not change the part-time golf pro position to a full-time. Number, the one with the seventy-four K with the offset of thirty-two.
Okay. No, I want him to stay.
Okay, so that would be a, that would be a nay.
Okay.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Spencer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunn?
Nay.
Mayor, uh, Councilmember Kennedy? Keep going backwards.
Nay.
Okay. All right, so that's four-two. Golf professionals line item stays.
So he stays?
Yes. Or she?
Nothing further.
Thank you.
I think we've.
Well, what's on the next page, can we?
Well, are you looking to make a, make a?
I just wanna re, just.
If you could go to the next slide, please.
We just roll up to it just for a quick look here. What's the replace resident request system? Is that?
So this is, uh, we were using a system for years called Text My Gov, which allowed people to say, hey, the garbage can at the park is overflowing. We've replaced that with a different system that cost about seven thousand. Text My Gov cost about four thousand, so we're spending an extra three thousand.
This is the new thing we just?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we had Councilmember Spencer, then Councilmember Kurtz.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, uh, make a motion on the proposed wage adjustment, um, to a one percent increase rather than three percent.
Hey, I don't hear a second, motion fails. All right, Councilmember Kurtz.
I feel like we worked our way through this a little bit, but if we go through, um, does anybody have any other things that were in the line items in the budget that they would consider getting rid of? Since we seem to have talked through these, but if there's still an impetus to try to reduce the budget a little bit, are there things besides things we've already talked about that were in here that stood out to anybody?
Well, I, I will pipe in. There, there were some open questions about a couple of the, um, capital funds and whether or not we wanted to reduce those, because they were, they were transfers in from general fund at one point. We may not need them. And so we had talked last year when we were talking about library about reducing some of the balances and some of those specific capital funds back to that or back to the general fund. That could be a way not just, not necessarily to reduce the budget, but to add some money to the general fund if somebody, anybody wants to take a look at any of those. Just a suggestion. I mean, we talked about them a little bit. I think the discussion was to leave them. Go, go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz, then back to Councilmember Kennedy.
I feel like in, people can correct me if I'm wrong, that the general idea is to reduce the actual expenditures though, so I'm not sure moving money from one place to another is, I could be wrong.
Uh, Councilmember Kennedy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate what you just said, that there was some things that you guys discussed. On, what that tells me is that there is a possibility of something. And because of that, I'm even more encouraged that as a collaborative effort, allow mayor, staff to look at and expand, maybe, talk about what were those and what were the dollar amounts that would affect.
Please hold.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Please hold, let me get there. Yeah, go ahead while I'm walking.
That, um, that's all, again, fine and dandy, but to Councilmember Kurtz's point, it doesn't do anything with the spending. It basically just shuffles money around. So.
Let me get there. So the, there are only a couple of them and we did have some, some discussions. I think it was kind of subtle, but just, um, just for discussion, let me get there. I'm rolling through some of them that we can't do anything with. Read, read, read. Um, Streets Capital, that stays. Yeah, okay, so. I, I will when I get there. One was the, there're only, I think there're only like two, the community, community messaging fund that we talked, so originally in, for the twenty-twenty-five budget, we had talked about, um, transferring a hundred thousand of that out to library capital. Obviously, that's, that's not happening, so that leaves us with a hundred and seven thousand dollars, though the discussion was at an earlier meeting for twenty-twenty-six was to leave that because with City Hall moving, there could be a, could be a, a need or want to put messaging at City Hall. So that was one of them. Does anybody want, you know, even want to entertain talking about moving any of that? And I think that's kind of settled when we had our first discussions. Okay, so that was one. Underground to the building contingency fund was the next. Um, we had slated to move a hundred thousand dollars out of that, um, to general fund to, um, for, or back for library capital. Again, we're now, we have a hundred and thirty-five, thirty, thirty-nine thousand proposed for twenty-twenty-six in the building contingency fund. I would, my argument be, we, now that we have our asset management software and it's been being used now for several years, we're more up to date on maintenance. We also, we know the status of maintenance on all of our buildings better. We've barely used any of this out of, I don't remember what twenty-twenty-two and beyond, be, before that were, but the average expenditure out of this, um, was, has been zero since at least twenty-twenty-three. So that's one that, you know, if you guys want to talk about moving some or, you know, maybe moving a hundred thousand dollars out of it back to general fund, that could help offset some things, but again, just food for thought. That is on page one oh seven, Building Contingency Fund, number three-three-seven. I think those were really the only two. Let's double check.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
But this can be used for, you know, like a sudden needed repair or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, you know, but looking at history, we haven't really had to use it. This was put in place when we had a catastrophic failure of the roof on the, at the library, um, years ago. And, and then we made it into its own fund just to, if we spent five thousand, then the next year we would put five thousand dollars in the budget to get it back to up to a hundred. I think a hundred was the original, um, balance, um, goal. Uh, but again, now that we have the asset manag, management software, I think we have a lot more confidence in what we know our buildings need. Um, it still doesn't preclude any emergencies, but, um, that's gonna happen no matter what. So, Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh, thank you for pointing those out. I, I have a question. Is it, you know, we spent a lot of time on this tonight, which is very important. I don't feel any of this is, is wasted at all. Are we scheduled for one more meeting after this to discuss this? If we are, I would propose this. We beat this horse and he's not quite dead yet. If anybody wants to bring up some additional cuts, which I could certainly come up with something, I'm sure, then let's bring it up by one for the next meeting.
The twenty, the second is our next one. We have a, but that's during a regular meeting, so we don't have as much time, but we.
Right. And I don't think we should have to take a lot of time.
That's the only.
We've actually, we've actually talked a lot about this. Once again, this is not wasted time, because this is a citizen's time that we're, I'm not wasting any of my time. This is what my job is, to talk about this and how we're gonna be able to make a decision. So if it, the question is there and we're only talking two cents, great analogy. Great analogy, two cents out of a dollar. It's amazing. Take the next period of time until the next meeting. Anybody wants to come up with something, bring it up. If not, it's a done deal, we move ahead.
So, Councilmember Kurtz.
I don't mind that idea because I think it gives everybody a chance to go back and look at, um, maybe look at it a different way than, perhaps we've looked at it thus far, line by line again. Um, but I would ask that perhaps we send those things to Mark ahead of time so that we could then think about what they are and look at them and be, be prepared to come in on the second, because if we only have a certain amount of time, I want to make sure we can get to whatever the other business items are that night.
Yeah, luckily it's the only workshop and we are short on time.
But isn't that between, isn't that our second read of this?
Yeah, Kyle, when is our second?
We, so we have space. Um, if it would have wrapped up tonight, we could have put the second read on for the second. We can put the second read on for the eighth. Uh, we can put the second read on for the sixteenth.
As long as it's before the end of the year.
So my, my hesitation with the eighth is that we have city council interviews and all that deliberation process and we had agreed, I don't know if we've changed our mind about having the, that stuff done before we move on and have, don't want to have a city council, new city council member voting on a budget they haven't been a part of potentially. Um, and this conversation may take longer than we think it's going to and I don't want to have candidates waiting until ten o'clock at night.
Right, yeah. So it is, the budget is the only workshop item, I believe, for the second. Is that correct? I can't remember what the agenda said this morning. It hasn't been that long, but.
And then if we do wrap up on the second, we can still put the second read on for the eighth. There wouldn't be any disguise. It would be proceed to directly to second read and vote and then we would move, we wouldn't, uh, we wouldn't want any additional deliberation on the second read.
We could include.
Hold on, let me, let me get.
That's, that's the only workshop scheduled on the second.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Kennedy.
We could include this first and second same night.
Well, we've already done the first, correct?
We, we did the first at the last meeting.
We could schedule it on the second. If we have to move it, we move it. Right?
I would really hope that it would be a very, very short.
Yes, by the way, Mayor, yes.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, um, go, uh, Councilmember Kennedy and then, I didn't have yet another, okay. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim and then Councilmembers.
I'm not really sure that I see the need to prolong this. I think the majority, um, vote tonight made it clear. Um, when we went through, when we started going through the list and we looked at the things that were probably the lowest of the low on that list, art and a golf professional. Arts and a golf professional. And we couldn't even get majority support to do that. So I'm not really sure it makes sense to continue to go through here uh, and prolong this.
Councilmember Spencer.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to echo that, um, because I think, um, the, the real question at hand is whether there is any, um, appetite to cut anything from this budget. Because if there is none, it doesn't matter what anybody comes back with, because we'll just, we'll just vote and, and if it ends up being a three-three tie, it'll die. So, um, a, at the end of the day, it, it sounds to me like it, it's a, what, whether there is any, any appetite to cut anything out of this budget, because, um, if, if there's not more than three individuals, uh, considering that perhaps we, um, are spending too much as a city, then it doesn't matter. Um, so I just want to throw that out there. Uh, with that being said, I, I want to go back to the, the CFP if possible. We kind of jumped out of that.
So there was no, nobody wanted to discuss the building contingency fund? So I can take my finger off this page or what? Okay, the building contingency fund. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember.
Okay, so, um, back to the CFP, uh, we are on page one thirty-two. Uh, PF twenty.
One thirty-two?
Yep.
One thirty-two, yeah, PF twenty.
Just be, everybody be cognizant of the time. It's a special meeting, which does not allow for extensions. It's a little, we have a little bit over fifteen minutes.
You also have an ordinance, Mayor, just to keep that in mind.
Yes.
Want a clarification? We asked Sean, uh, this came up actually, I think at one of the meetings.
Okay, thank.
And Sean said that we actually could extend a special meeting if we wanted.
Oh, okay, great.
But maybe Sean can clarify.
Missing, sorry. Sean, just clarify.
No, so what I, what I said was you'd have to suspend the rules to extend the meeting. And so the rules are what have been interpreted, interpreted to be that the meeting would end, um, by the city's own rules. So if you wanted to extend it, you'd have to suspend the rules and then extend the meeting, um, to do so.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, um, so, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to remove PF twenty and, uh, move it to the potential future projects list. Again, this wouldn't preclude us from getting any sort of grant funding, um, but we, uh, just ran through an advisory vote. The citizens voted overwhelmingly, uh, that we do not want to move forward with this. Uh, so I, I see no reason to leave, uh, all of these different amounts, uh, twenty, twenty-eight through thirty-one, uh, in place, um, with no plan to do so.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right, not hearing any. I will, um, again, I'll go back to our roll call voice, roll call vote, um, those in favor. So I'm gonna, the question is if you're in favor of removing line item, uh, capital facilities plan PF twenty to the potential, uh, future projects list. So, sorry, Councilmember Kurtz, I just keep starting on my left.
Nay.
Councilmember Ball?
Nay.
Council, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Spencer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunn?
Nay.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Of course, yes.
All right, motion fails. Right, well, it's hives. Where's our seventh council member? Um, so I see, I see the points. Um, this is in, so for me, as I'm, as I am tasked with breaking the tie, as this doesn't show up until twenty-twenty-eight, um, I'm going to vote nay so that a future council can visit it, um, the next go around of the budgets. If, if it was showing in twenty-twenty-seven, my decision may be different, but it's twenty-twenty-eight right now, so, um, I will go ahead and, um, and break the tie to leave it on. Mayor Pro Tim.
So can I ask for clarification here?
Yeah.
I can, I can understand potentially having a new library on this list. But we're, but we're saying here tonight that the new library slash community center at Town Square, the thing that the voters just said no to, we're gonna leave on our list?
Uh, Councilmember Ball?
Well, my comment is it was an advisory vote and they didn't have all the information, because we don't have all the information. We don't. So how can you, when you're talking in abstracts? So.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
We just went through this process talking about the pool situation. And one of the main arguments we had around this table was the voters have said no several times. Now, again, it would be different if this said new library, because there's still dis- dispute about whether and where and how we're gonna build a new library. But this is very specific. It says new library, community center at Town Square. Using REIT and the other funds. Something that the voter, and fourteen million, which was the project amount that we presented to the community. But now we're gonna say, less than two weeks after they voted, that we're gonna leave this on here?
Well, the vote's already been taken.
Wow.
Good. Next. Or do we want, or do we want to end this, end the budget discussion now so we can finish with, with the agenda and pick up on the second? Councilmember Kurtz.
I'm willing to move on with the agenda. Um, there was a question asked by Councilmember Spencer, people are interested in cutting the budget. And I do want to have that conversation. I don't want there to be a misperception that I don't support any sort of cuts that would, um, reduce the budget, but also not reduce our level of service for staff. So I'm willing to continue that discussion. Um, and I think it's unfair to assume that there's gonna be a three-to-three vote. We've seen tonight that that has not been the case.
All right, so we'll move on through the, through the agenda. Obviously, we really don't have time to take up the governance manual. We will put that back on a future workshop. Um, so we have no general business. We have, uh, for consent or action items, we do have council comments. Uh, Councilmember Kennedy?
Well, I'm looking at a government's manual. What, what future council would that be on?
Um, let's, if you, if you don't mind, we'll hit, hit that when we get to the future agenda. Thank you. Uh, all right, any other council comments that we haven't heard?
Okay, um, we have no public, oh, go ahead, the whole, which one was first?
Go ahead.
I can't see both at the same time.
Okay, I, I, I'd just like to respond to what, uh, Council, Councilmember Kurtz just said. It, e- even though the, the council majority has not, uh, been consistent, uh, tonight, uh, Councilmembers Kurtz and Dunn have not voted for one single cut. And so that's, that's my concern. If, if there is something that you're willing to cut from the budget, I would ask you to come prepared to tell us what it is you're willing to cut.
That's exactly what.
Have a conversation.
That's exactly what she had, she had said.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Uh, hold on, we've got, oh, sorry, I know that you had a question for you, but we had Councilmember Cargill, unless you want to.
That's fine.
So yes, I mean, that, I'm willing to have the discussion and think about cuts in a different way, because I didn't know we were gonna continue to talk about cuts. And just to be clear, there's not a majority here. It's, we're talking three-to-three or whatever. I. And just to be clear, there's not a majority here. It's, we're talking three to three or whatever. I, I, that's, it doesn't exist.
Um, Mayor Protim?
I just want to address something that was said a few minutes ago about um, the vote that was held and voters not having all the information. You know, I think it's really disrespectful to voters to suggest that essentially they were too stupid to vote for or against something. That's all, same, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy?
No, go, go right ahead.
Councilmember Ball?
I wasn't suggesting that voters are stupid at all, but there was very little information regarding this advisory vote. I mean, there, we don't, none of us know what was going to happen with this library, where it's going to be, what it's going to cost, if we're going to have a community center attached to it or not. You know, I mean. I wasn't being disrespectful to the voters.
Thank you. Councilmember Kennedy?
I had made a note here that I wanted to bring that up and I chose not to, but seeing as how council members have brought it up, I do want to address that. I've heard numerous times when this vote was coming up and I chose to say nothing during the time because I didn't want to sway the citizens vote either way. But I heard it again tonight and Councilman Ball to say that they didn't know what they were voting for. That's not true. Why I say that is because when this council spent money with the possibility of putting the library into the church building, we hired a company who was more than qualified to determine what had to be done, what the costs were going to be because they were professionals. And this council is real big on saying we need to listen to the professionals. They came forward with dollar amount per square foot based on today's dollar, what it was going to cost to build that facility. When it was suddenly decided that if we were not going to go with the church building, not because the majority of the council was not in favor of it. The majority of the council voted not to go that direction because the library individuals came to us and pointed out that the building was not big enough. That it was going to need eighteen thousand square feet, not fourteen thousand, because I remember distinctly when our librarian got up and said that. I remember distinctly the Mayor Protim said, are you saying that that library at fourteen thousand five hundred is not big enough? The answer was yes. That night it changed. That it was not going to be utilized for that. Now, the point that I really want to make is this. So we, we're going to give it to the citizens. What did we do? Council, we went to the same company. The same professionals and we said, we want to build the library, X number square footage, but somewhere else in the city. What will that cost? They use the same numbers on those figures for that time of what it was going to cost to build a building. The exact same numbers. Now suddenly what happened was this, prior to that, we had droves of people coming in saying, you people, you know, this is what the citizens want, this is what they want. So we said, all right, let's let the citizens tell us what they want. Then what happened? They started coming in in droves and saying, we can't do this because we don't know what the costs are. Well, we were using the same company who told us the cost the first time. And yet we had people coming in here saying that they were right, they're the professionals, but when it was going to go to the public, then they're not qualified. So that's the last I want to say on that. The thing that I do want to express for me tonight. Is a very difficult thing for me because it's personal. And I've tried to make a point that I've been on this council and in this city to leave the personal things aside and move on as much as possible. I am very proud that I was a council member. It's something that I look forward to being involved with, the ups and downs and even what we go through now, I'm glad that I'm part of that. But there comes a time when individuals decide that, you know what, it's not for me anymore because things change. Things change. The thing that I've been concerned about for a long period of time, and I mean a long period of time, the last several years, to see the trend. That our government, that the citizens of this city voted for is being jeopardized, in my opinion. And I'm sure I'll get argument of people saying, no, it is not. The council is the, the rulemaking entity, all seven of us. The mayor's office and staff's responsibility is to see that those rules and regulations are carried out. So what's concerning is that how such a small group of individuals can cause so much cha- chaotic. I'm old enough to see that there are companies that are destroyed, who are great companies, but they're not destroyed from without. They're destroyed from within. There are church organizations that are phenomenally successful and suddenly they go by the wayside. They're not destroyed by outside source. They're destroyed by inside source. There are great cities that make bad decisions and they. Dwindle with the success. I made the decision not to run again. My wife Betty. Went in for surgery first part, and I am not a victim here tonight, and I am not bringing this up because Betty and I are not victims. She went in for a surgery that was going to be very mundane. We discovered that she had cancer at the time, and by the time she was even out of recovery, we discovered it was stage four cancer. We didn't publicize that other than her friends and neighbors, and that's fine. Why? Because we don't feel that social media is a place that we should publicize that type of stuff for sympathy or whatever. But that was the primary reason why I chose not to run again. The thing that bothers them to me is this, that over a period of this last year. That. I had four separate citizens come to me and tell me the story. That some of these individuals were at two different campaign funding meetings. They went to numerous times where the uh, farmer's market booth was there with individuals in there. And also there was a time after a library trustees meeting, not during a library trustee, I'm sorry, a library, friends of the library meeting after, not during. These individuals got together and they made the following comments. And I believe that they were made because I had four separate people. Who heard these comments. And their comments were basically this about the people who chose not to run, but I'm only going to specifically talk about Betty and I. The comment was, on one occasion, it's unfortunate that Betty has cancer, but this is one time that cancer has a positive outlook. Because Kennedy's not running for council. That was not only the first time that was said. There are other times when it was found out that I also had cancer. And the comment was, well, they both had cancer, so that's a good enough reason why Mike wasn't going to run because he wasn't going to live long enough to serve out his term. So once again, cancer is positive in that scenario. Now, everybody in the room can't help but think, that's terrible. But the point is this, and here's the point I want to make. And I swear to God, I'll try to be as brief. Cancer in itself is the scariest word you can get hit with. Because you don't know, it's, it's a, is it termination, we're all going to die, but that's a scary thing that happens. But then you, the more we looked at it and decided we can control it through an attitude, regardless of what happens to Betty and I, we started realizing, what is a cancer cell? Cancer cell is one of billions of many other cells that are in our body. All the cells are working as one. Like a city who's working like a fine tune or a corporation or a church. Suddenly what happens, you get a couple of cancer cells in there. They don't like the rest of cells, what they do, they start, their, what is their goal in life? Change the rest of cells. But their purpose is not to the good. Their purpose is to destroy the host. That's what cancer does. I believe that that same scenario can happen in churches, in families, in business. And the cities. I believe that we have unfortunate, a minority, not the majority of the citizens. We have out here, this is a city that is together. We are together as a city, but as a small group, we are not. We have individuals who ignore what is on this wall. These individuals have come in here repeatedly saying that we don't like what you're doing, but they've never been able to point out to the council, any of the council members, that what we're doing, how we voted was against an ordinance policy procedure. They've never, no one's been able to do that. But they continually want to destroy. Now, what allows that to fester? The citizens that do that or the people who are in control? The people who are in control are the eight of us. The seven that makes the decisions, the eight with staff, whose responsibilities to carry those out. Is we of seven do not, would be willing to abide by what's on that wall or what we swore to. Then what we are doing is telling these minority, it's okay to do what you're doing. And that is destroying us. It's not possibly destroying us, it is destroying us. I want to point out that Betty and I are not victims here because for us to feel victims, that would mean that these minority that have sat in these seats out here and criticized and make comments about, well. You three voted against or voted to give a contract to a Mexican food place. And then have citizens come forward and we get blasted because we guaranteed that we're, that we're going to give a contract to make three hundred, seven thousand dollars more. At the same time, we have council members that say, I don't like Mexican food, so therefore I'm going to say no. That is totally against what we swear to. I was concerned greatly, greatly, when recently, a recent individual who became elected, and I respect the individual because the person got the votes. I respect that, went out, did the job, great. Stood at that podium and made this following statement, and it's on tape. I will never ever vote against anything to do with the library. What I heard then right in there, that that person was not going to follow. What the rules are. I'm saddened by that. That allows individuals to come in here, a minority, little cancer cells, who are continually wanting to infest the rest of the individuals. Now, I will stop at that. I just think it's deplorable and unfortunate that these three or four people came to me and why they came to me was this, I found this theater, Rusty, and I appreciate they did this. They were witnesses to this. When they went into the farmer's market, they were witnesses at these fundraisers, they were witnesses at a meeting after the Friends of the Library. They came to me because they wanted to make sure that if I ever heard about it, that they did not participate in that. Therefore, I believe these people. So. Thank you.
We have a quick motion to extend.
Motion to extend to nine oh five.
Mayor, hang on a sec. Mayor, hang on a sec. You need a motion to suspend the rules first and then a motion to extend.
Be quickly.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to uh, suspend the rules.
Okay, all in favor? Not any opposed?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to expe- uh, extend to nine fifteen.
Second, anybody?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're extended. Uh, real quick.
All right, apologize, I tried my best to finish.
No, that's okay, and I was not going to interrupt you. And somebody told me about those comments, Councilmember Kennedy, and it broke my heart. I don't care what differences you and I have had in the past. It absolutely broke my heart and I am sorry that you guys had to go through that. No public hearings or appeals, no resolutions. We do have an ordinance. Kyle?
Uh, ordinance three fourteen, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting the twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty-one capital facilities plan.
It was first read, so no discussion, no emergency ordinances, uh, upcoming agenda items, let's whip out our. Uh, our future workshops, uh, we can answer Councilmember Kennedy's question there. So December second, we have uh, budget workshop, the eighth, we have the um, budget and council interviews, the sixteenth is open. So let's um, slate, if that's okay with everybody, slate the governance manual in there. And again, I know there was some, some concern about, you know, throwing us on a new council member's lap, but unfortunately it's unavoidable. The mayor, uh, Councilmember Kurtz.
So I think that the governance manual was one that at one, the council said they were fine with the new council having some input over. I think it was the budget that we wanted to get done. So I just wanted to clarify if we're right, if that was my understanding, because I, I think the sixteenth, we generally do like um, holiday things and fun things, not like super nerdy things. Which you guys want to do, we can do, but I don't, I don't know if everybody's going to have.
I, we'll, we'll make sure we do all of the, the, the fun things before that. How's that?
And just curious how productive that meeting will be.
All right, uh, I think I thought you can, it was Councilmember Kennedy, did you have a comment?
Oh, no.
Okay, sorry, uh, Councilmember Ball.
It's the sixteenth and our last meeting of this calendar year?
Gosh, I hope so. Just curious. Um, yeah, and, and I believe, I know it wasn't Mark's report, but I believe the, the Christmas lunch or staff is the eighteenth.
December eighteenth, that's correct.
Right.
And you should have received an email from Heidi Workman.
Yeah, I can't today. I hadn't seen it yet, okay. All right, um, we are, we also have um, additional citizen comments. We do have a few minutes. If anybody in chambers or online would like to make an additional city co- citizen comment. Is there anybody online? I don't see anybody rushing to the podium here in chambers. Nobody online, all right. Um, we don't have any executive session, so with that, we will adjourn at nine oh five. Thanks, everybody.